Meeting of Dublin City Council, back to order. John, could you lead us on the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business tonight, a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to participate in a fundraising effort that was dubbed "Real Men Wear Pink." And we have a couple of real men in the front row of our audience here this evening because it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have Dr. David Schmidt, Mr. Dave Morgan, and Courtney Ross with the American Cancer Society here to sort of explain to us what all exactly that means. And we launched this campaign, "Real Men Wear Pink," and here's the deal that we committed to. And these guys know, because they have that look on their faces, they know what we've committed to. And I'm participating in this, and we have committed to wear pink every day for the entire month of October. Now, I've already been criticized for not having pink on tonight, but I don't have 31 articles of pink clothing, so I'm gonna have to stretch my pink as much as I possibly can in the month of October. But Courtney, do you want to sort of give us an idea of what Breast Cancer Awareness Month is and what it is we can do?
Yeah, so like-
Not to put you on the spot, but you're a resident expert here, so go.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, like the mayor said, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is the month of October. I am from the American Cancer Society, so we do have a lot of programs in place to help support our breast cancer individuals, survivors, and their families. One of those being the "Real Men Wear Pink" campaign, where we have reached out to the community leaders and asked if they would be an advocate in the community to raise funds against breast cancer research. In our programs and services, we offer cancer patients and their families. We also have a Making Strides Against Breast Cancer event on October 14th, which shows dedicated individuals and participants in the community that come together and fight back against that disease as well.
Well, thank you very much for coming in, Courtney. And Dave and Dave, do you guys have anything you want to add? I'm not real sure. Maybe you can help me understand how we raise our money. I know we have websites, and you can go to our websites, and we can make donations. And I imagine somewhere towards the end of the month, we're gonna be explaining how much money we raise.
Sure. So for my individual case, again, my name's Dave Morgan. I'm actually a local owner here of Brick House Blue over in the Dublin Bridge Park area. I was called by the American Cancer Society on August 4th. I think primarily because I'm a new owner of a company here that brings in executive meetings and has access to a lot of executives in the area, as well as running the Mid-Ohio Pumas. That's the largest AAU basketball program in the state of Ohio. So I think with those two things combined, that's why I was reached out to be a part of this campaign, along with Mayor Peterson. In doing so, I wasn't sure, because I had not had anybody affected by this particular disease. And so I had reached out to one of my parents in our program, Dr. David Schmidt, and asked that I champion this cause for his wife, who had been battling breast cancer for 10 years. And on August 5th, the day after I was reached out to, I called the doctor. He said, "Yeah, it'd be great. Shannon would love this. It would be great to support the cause, and all of the boys in the program can get behind this to do the right thing." Two days later, Dr. David Schmidt's wife passed away on August 6th. And so this has really elevated the cause and got a lot of energy behind this particular situation. And so alone, myself and Dr. Peterson, or Mayor Peterson and 33 other individuals in central Ohio, we are challenging other states and other cities to raise more funds than each of those particular areas. Right now, I'm fortunate to be the seventh in the country in leading central Ohio against Michigan and Kentucky and West Virginia. So we're moving ahead pretty fast. But that's really the lowdown of it. There's opportunities to raise funds the month of October. We're doing a Hilliard Bradley versus Dublin Jerome Pinkout. My kids go to Hilliard Bradley, so we're asking the whole stadium to wear pink that night and to make donations to those particular funds. So I'm gonna turn it over really quick to Dr. Schmidt, to just let him say a few words, if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Dave. And before he does, my son and Dave and Shannon's son played baseball together. And she was always there and always fighting and always courageous. And Dave, what he, what they have gone through with Shannon and we got to the "Real Men Wear Pink" event just a few weeks ago, like you said, and Dave stands up and says how he lost his wife 23 days ago. I mean, if you want to see an absolute personification of courage, he's sitting right there. And for him to be able to so quickly turn all of that energy and the tragedy of all of that and turn it into something for the good, it is truly astounding thing. We're so lucky, both of the Daves, to have guys like you in our community, and particularly you, Doc. Our heart goes out to you and to Shannon. I don't want to put you on the spot, but guess what? I'm gonna put you on the spot, because this is a personal story, and this is a personal mission, and it's important.
Yeah, I appreciate those words that you said that night and tonight. The timing was something else, but Shannon meant so much to so many people. I'm a Dublin dad. Moved here in 2002. The only reason we moved here was because of Shannon's work. I moved from Michigan. So I have two young boys that are 10 and 13, and this is all that they've known, is mom growing up, mom's got breast cancer. But she was a symbol of strength, determination, courage. I mean, she was kind. She got the best out of every day. She enjoyed people. And what made it work for us to be able to withstand 11 years of countless appointments and CAT scans, MRIs, you name it, was the Dublin community. That's a fact. The Dublin community, it was unreal. We would go to appointments, and they would say, "Do you need any help? Do you need to speak with a social worker?" And we'd say, "No, we have Dublin right behind us." And with our service, just over, you know, a month ago, I have had so many people from outside the Dublin community that were just completely overwhelmed by the response and just the makeup of this city that we love, that we call Dublin. So hopefully, I can, over the next few years, just give back to all that's been given to us.
Thanks, Doc. You know, when you take a hit like that and you get knocked down, you can either get up or give up. And Shannon never gave up, so maybe we're doing this in her memory. So our heart goes out to you and your family and all the families that are impacted by not only breast cancer, but cancer in general. I don't think there's anybody amongst us that hasn't been impacted by it one way or another. So our thoughts and prayers are with you, David, and your family. And I do have a proclamation that whereas the city of Dublin is committed to raising awareness about breast cancer and the impact that it has in our community, and whereas breast cancer is the most common newly diagnosed cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States, and whereas breast cancer affects both men and women, in 2017, more than 250,000 new cases were estimated to be diagnosed in women and nearly 2,500 in men. And whereas breast cancer risk generally increases with age, with about eight of every 10 new breast cancer cases and almost nine out of 10 breast cancer deaths being diagnosed in women 50 years of age and older. Whereas since 1989, there has been a 39% decrease in breast cancer deaths, and there are now more than 3.5 million breast cancer survivors. That's still not enough. And whereas the American Cancer Society continues to raise awareness through events such as Making Strides Against Breast Cancer and the "Real Men Wear Pink" campaign, so that together, we can save more lives, now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Dublin and recognize the important work the American Cancer Society and its efforts to save lives throughout early detection and prevention, innovation, breast cancer research, and patient support. Signed this 24th day of September 2018. And we will proudly display that. So although I'm in competition with you two, I'm gonna try, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to catch you. What did you say, you're eighth in the country?
Yeah.
That's crazy. I'm not gonna be able to catch you, but I'll do the best that I can. So thank you very much for coming. Does anybody have any questions or comments you want to make?
I'd just like to add, Shannon was probably the fiercest competitor I ever knew. And we shared a love of basketball, and our kids played a lot of basketball together. And if you take anything to this challenge, Greg, it's she was a competitor, and you better step up your game, because she would be honored by nothing less than your best. And fierce competition, because she was a fighter to the end. I remember the last time I saw her, and she was battling hard. And just a wonderful woman. Be tremendously missed.
Yeah, and the word that comes to my mind when you think about that family is courage. From the beginning to the middle, and where we are now is courage. So please, get online. I'm sure the Cancer Society has a place where you can just click "Real Men Wear Pink," and you get a list of the competitors, I would imagine.
Yeah, there's a "Real Men Wear Pink" website. If you know yours.
Good, we can incorporate that in our communications in October, and we talk about breast cancer awareness.
We'll do everything we can to get those numbers as high as possible. Yes, picture with them?
Sure.
There are little signup sheets out there, but nobody signed up. I would always like to ask if somebody just didn't know they were supposed to sign up, or they forgot, or overlooked. And if anybody has a comment on anything, they can have five minutes to talk about it. Seeing no hands, we will move on to the Consent Agenda of our portion of our agenda. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of the four Consent Agenda items from the Consent Agenda? I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann.
Mr. Keenan. Mr. Keenan, Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Ordinance 47-18, Ann.
Amending the annual, I'm sorry, adopting the 2019 and 2023 Five-Year Capital Improvements Program.
This is just to remove it from the table and put it back on the active agenda, is that right?
Correct. I request that you would remove this from the table and schedule it for October 8th. And also as a reminder, there's a 5:30 meeting scheduled as a council work session prior to the October 8th council meeting, at which time we'll also discuss this prior to the council meeting.
Thank you, Ann. I make a motion that we remove ordinance 47-18 from the table and schedule it for a public hearing on October 8th, 2018. Is there a second? Ann.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Second reading, ordinance 59-18, Ann. Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018.
Matthew.
Good evening, council. There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance.
Any questions from council?
I have a couple of quick questions, if that's okay. Page one, at the bottom, it talks about an additional $35,000 is being requested for fees paid to the city's investment advisors the city utilizes. It talks about these being offset. Do we know what the revenue generated that offset that $35,000 expense?
That would be the earnings on the investment.
Okay. Do we have any idea what those were?
I don't have a dollar figure. I believe the percentage was about 1.8% of the money that we had invested, but I haven't seen the dollar figure.
Okay. I have an additional question. In Section 8, there's a $705,000 transfer. $450,000 is attributed to the park in the retaining wall, G3. I know we had some contingency dollars in the construction of those items. Is that going to be covered by the contingency dollars, or is that going to be? I know it's an extra to contract issue, but is that falling within our contingency, or is that outside of the contingency that we had planned?
I believe this is outside of the contingency, because it's based on a change order, so that transfer from the Capital Construction Improvement Fund to the Capital Construction Fund, we'll take care of that.
My final question is on page four of this document. These monies, so we had a guaranteed management contract with a lump sum that we had engaged the construction company for several months before construction was to begin to help minimize unforeseen expenses due to it being such a complicated project. Are these in Section 8? Are these, were these not discovered in that process? Or at what point did the discovery of these items come to light?
You said Section 8, correct?
Section 8, yes. Page four of the document.
At the bottom, three, four. Yeah, so these are actually expenses associated with consulting services. So we retained a bridge expert that advises us as issues arise, and these are expenses that fall outside of the construction contract. So it's a separate contract that we have with Genesis.
Okay. But it's still classified as a change order?
This is not considered, this is a change order to Genesis's, Genesis's original contract. So it's not a change order to the GMP contract that you were just talking about.
Okay.
We actually contracted with Genesis early on in the design, so that they could serve as the owner's expert essentially for the bridge construction, bridge design and construction. So that's extending their contract through the construction phase.
Okay. My last question will be, at our last meeting, we had our Munis reports were delivered to us in our packet, and we had looked about where we were through the budget process versus where we were in the time of year. So these changes represent 3.723.050 million dollars in changes. What does that do to our status for the year in terms of funding mechanisms of these being transferred from the capital fund?
I'll have to get back with you with that information.
Great. I would appreciate it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Kathy?
Yeah, I have a similar question on that. So same Section 7, that totals, what, 1.6 million? So will that addition be considered and included in the debt issue for 2018? Do you know? Matthew?
No, I don't believe it's going to be included in our upcoming debt issuance. I believe the idea was that we could use some of the balance that remained on a previous bond issuance to pay for that, and then anything that wasn't covered in that would be covered out of, considered a transfer instead of an advance.
A transfer from the capital fund?
Correct.
So again, sort of, I guess, related to the CIP conversation that we've been having, does that, do these changes then change that beginning balance of that capital fund which has rolled through into the 19 CIP? Or was that already incorporated?
I'm pretty sure that was accounted for and under the assumptions of our, that we made going into the formulation of the capital budget. Well, I'll verify that for you, but I'm quite confident that was the case.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kathy? So we're okay voting and get this information later, though? Okay. Ann?
Mr. Keenan. Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 60-18 through 64-18 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan. These are 60-18 is John E. and Sally S. Leopard, 47-80 Bright Road. 61-18 is Thomas A. McDowell and Diane Hornung, Riverside Drive and Bright Road. 62-18 is John W. McKittrick, property located in Bright Road. 63-18, Charles Johnson, Jr. Trustee, 41-63 Bright Road. 64-18 is BRC Properties, Inc., Catholic Diocese, from property located on Bright Road.
Thank you, Ann. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. There are no changes from the first reading, and we will continue good faith negotiations. And we're hopeful that we will reach mutually agreeable terms with the property owners. Since the last reading, we are very close with, close to reaching agreement with two of the property owners. We have agreement on substantive terms. However, these ordinances do allow us to continue with the eminent domain process.
Questions from council? Hearing none? Ann?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
First reading is ordinance 65-18.
Amending Chapter 35 with the codified ordinance as to revise the fee and service charge, revenue costs comparison system, and establishing a schedule of fees and service charges for city of Dublin services.
I'll introduce it. Matt? Dana? Whoever?
Matt's gonna walk you through this.
Good evening, council. Today, we're going to be discussing ordinance 65-18. It is the annual update to our schedule of fees and service charges. A quick recap on how we got here. All divisions, except Planning and Recreation, were discussed at the June 25 Finance Committee meeting. The recommendations discussed at that meeting are reflected in ordinance 65-18. That is to say that there are no changes from the fee recommendations that were presented at that June meeting. Planning and Recreation were discussed at the August 13 Finance Committee meeting. For planning, the ordinance contains a modification to the charging procedure that was discussed at that meeting that incorporates the comments and direction provided by council at that meeting, and we will discuss that in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. Also, the ordinance contains a modification to the fee recovery policy that was discussed at the previous committee meeting. This modification is informed by subsequent meetings regarding this CIP process. No fee recommendations, particularly those for the annual and daily passes associated with the outdoor pools or the DCRC, have been changed since those that were reflected back to you at the August meeting. In a few cases where general fee increases were presented, you know, we presented a 25% increase to rentals. Obviously, to put that into the ordinance, we had to specify what the increase would be. So that might be a slight difference from what was presented in August, but we stayed true to our recommendations that were presented at that meeting. With that, we can begin to discuss the Planning Division. To recap, our current procedure is that when different services for the same project are submitted at the same time, we charge only the highest fee and $0 for additional services. We previously proposed to charge all fees for all services, but the direction was to protect small projects from fee increases. So we have a proposal that we believe meets that objective, and that is to charge all fees for all services, except for projects requesting two or three services, where one or more of the services is a minor version of that service. For those projects, do not charge any additional fees beyond the highest fee for the requested minor service. That is a lot of words. Let's talk about how we operationalize that. We have four services that contain minor and major versions. There are preliminary development plan, amended final development plan, conditional use, and West Innovation District application fee. I would expect that this charging procedure will apply most often to a conditional use minor, followed by an amended final development plan minor. I would expect very few of Service 2 or 46 to be impacted under this charging plan. Since January of 2017, 23 of the 179 projects submitted to planning concurrently submitted more than one service. So that is the universe of projects that we're discussing that would be impacted by this charging procedure change. Under the charging procedure that we're proposing, two of the 23 projects would qualify as a small project under our charging procedure. One of those was in addition to a car dealership. They required a minor project review and a conditional use minor, the other being a replating of a PUD lot, which required a final plat and an amended final development plan minor. It's important to put into context how this charging procedure change is also affected by the general structure of planning's fee schedule. There are at least five different ways that the planning fee structure is structured to protect small projects from facing the largest possible fee. One of those being the distinction between minor and major service versions. There are those four services that we just discussed as part of the charging procedure. Part of them is that they have a minor and major, so that smaller projects can fall under that minor version in general. You might also expect smaller projects to find a geographic base. That base would be the historic district. You might expect more smaller projects to arise from that district. You'll recall from our August meeting that that district has a special subsidy that requires a 0% cost recovery for three services listed there. We also try to utilize a sliding scale for fees based on project size whenever possible for the four projects listed there. We also vary fees by applicant or type of service. And when appropriate, we have a fee difference between residential and commercial services. So all told, 20 of the roughly 50 to 55 planning fees have some type of protection in them to try to limit the fees to project size. None of the others are going to be permits, that a one-size-fits-all approach seems to be more appropriate. So when possible, we do try to limit the fees that we are charging for smaller projects. This charging procedure would be in addition to those five ways that we attempt to structure the fees. So with that, we have our first discussion panel for the night, and that is, should we accept the recommendation for modifying planning's charging procedure? And I await any questions.
Have questions or comments, or want to answer the question?
I appreciate the attempts to insulate small projects, and certainly, the last thing we want to do is discourage improvements on, for small business folks and people like that. And, you know, it is important that the taxpayer not have the burden of covering the costs for development that happens in the community, that, you know, that those costs should be, is where appropriate, borne by the developer. So I appreciate the efforts in looking at what our costs are and trying to assign them to the most accurate line item, and making sure that the appropriate people are responsible for recovering the costs that the city expends in monitoring our development. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Kathy?
I know Councilmember Fox, who's not with us tonight, mentioned a few times about wanting to be sure that we support small, smaller development. So this variation based on size of projects, is it your opinion this is a proxy for smaller organizations? Or did you do some follow-up work on that? Thoughts about that?
Well, I think smaller projects are really addressed by the other ways that the fee structure is designed, and that would be utilizing the sliding scale or varying the fee by applicant type. Oftentimes, for example, on a variance, is it a variance application review? If you're a single-family development of five acres or less, you pay a lower fee than others. So that fee's designed to encourage smaller family developments of five acres or less by having a segregated fee structure. So I think when we're trying to identify how we help smaller developments, it's all of those components. The charging procedure will help, of course, because it'll carve out two of the 23 projects that we were previously not carving out. But I think it's a part of the puzzle, in addition to those five other ways that we try to handle it.
So with these changes, what were the, what do you feel is the economic difference between fees collected with this change and what was a proposed last meeting?
Sure. So under the current procedure, we're subsidizing about $75,000 in fees. Under the previously proposed procedure, we would have collected all of that revenue. Under the currently proposed procedure, we'll collect about $72,500. So we're getting a majority of it. The difference is, when we're looking at that, those are 23 of 179. So we're really talking about the top 12% to begin with. Most smaller projects are only going to require one service. So when we talk about expanding that to two, we really should be kind of limiting that. And we still are catching 10% of those projects with our charging procedure. In addition to the five ways that we're trying to save, reduce the fees overall, you could have a multi-service project that's using smaller versions of each of those services.
Well, it sounds like the answer to your question is probably, yes, we agree with your, we answer, say yes to your question. Do you need us to amend something, or it is?
Nope. It is in the ordinance, as though I hoped you would say yes.
Well, your wishes have come true, Matt. There you go. At least one of them. Let's go to the next one.
Or not.
Got the other half to go.
It's the first reading, so there will be another opportunity for, I'm sure, Councilmember Fox might have some questions, and we'll still have that opportunity our next time together.
Carry on.
So now, we can turn our attention to the Recreation Services Division. So let's start by clearly stating the program fee recovery policy and looking at our proposed change to it. This is different than the change we discussed at the August meeting. We are proposing that in addition to 50% of the direct cost and the building maintenance costs, we include an assigned percentage of costs associated with certain- costs, we include an assigned percentage of costs associated with certain recreation program capital improvement projects as part of the fee recovery process. Before we analyze that change, I wanted to take a minute to talk about how this policy has changed over time, because it struck me, looking at this policy, that this is something very similar to what we faced in 2010, when the policy was amended to include, or to more clearly specify, I shouldn't say to include, but to more clearly specify building maintenance costs. The original policy developed in 1994 did not include of-direct costs and building maintenance costs. Direct costs were implied, but not explicitly stated in the policy. Building costs were unspecified, and they attempted to recover building costs, but their lack of success ultimately led them to amend the policy in 2010 to explicitly state them. At no point at the original policy or after the first amendment in 2010 was there any consideration given to capital improvement costs. And specifically in 2010, they pointed out that the policy did not include any debt service costs for recreation center cost recovery. So I think the important thing to keep in mind here is that we've been down this road before, and we've previously amended the cost study, the fee recovery policy, in a way similar to what we're proposing today. The second, I think, is when you look at that first column that says, "Direct Costs to Recreation Program," we are not changing the substance of what the policy has been regarding the operating costs associated with the facility since 1994. We're continuing the shared partnership between the users and the residents of Dublin regarding the operations of that facility. And indeed, we're continuing that in building maintenance as well. We are not touching the policy with regards to those types of costs. What we are doing is, when we look over at that third column on capital improvements, you'll see at no time did we ever ask user fees to cover a capital improvement. The $6.6 million in general obligation bonds that were paid off in 2010, the $4 million in general obligation bonds that were paid off in 2018, and the $4.4 million in improvements since 2005 that have been processed through the CIP pertaining to the DCRC and the outdoor pools have all been funded by sources other than user fees. And now, I think it's time, I think we've seen through our subsequent CIP discussions, that the future of income tax-backed debt is going to be fairly limited, and that gives us two options. One option is to cancel or indefinitely postpone projects. The other is to seek additional sources of revenue in order to provide for those projects. And I think here, we have an opportunity to capture user fees to provide funding for these projects, and we have an opportunity to update our fee policy to include those projects. So that is what we're recommending. We're recommending that we add that language to allow us to assign a percentage of certain recreation program capital improvement projects. We are also recommending that we assign 100% of the costs associated with the reconstruction of the North Pool, which was originally programmed in the original CIP in 2020 at a cost of $6 million. If we were to look at the debt service estimate on that, it would be about $480,000 annually. We're also recommending that 100% of the future improvements to the DCRC. Now, that has not been discussed as part of the CIP process, but is theorized to occur no earlier than 2020, or perhaps 2021, '22, somewhere in that timeframe. So there will be an opportunity to discuss that project in greater detail in future CIPs. The debt costs associated with that project would be approximately $280,000. So now that we've identified changing the policy and the projects we are seeking to fund through that policy, we need to identify the fee revenue to support that change.
Matt, if I could just interject real quick, could you go back one slide? I don't want to mislead that the focus is 2020. Right now, the existing approved capital improvement plan, five-year plan, shows the pool in 2020. We have not adopted a new plan yet, so that's why that's up there. And it's not to say that that is the year that we would be proposing to do that. So just a point of clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the left-hand side, we have the program areas that these fees would be classified under. In the middle column, I tried to summarize the fees. Some are easier than others, but the general idea of the fee increases are located in that space. And then the revenue that can be gained. The important thing to notice is that the revenue estimate is based on 2017 units of service. To the extent that those units of service are not realized, we may have an issue realizing that revenue gain. I don't believe that'll be a problem, because most of our fee recommendations are well within and well-positioned in the market, and we have not raised fees in a very long time. However, that is something that we will be mindful of and monitor moving forward. These program areas are the program areas specifically outlined in the recreation ordinance. These are the program areas that the fees are specifically approved by council. You'll notice that these fee increases in revenue total approximately $580,000. That is short of $760,000 to fund the proposed capital improvements. The other $180,000 will come from fees that are earned by services that are priced internal to recreation. So these are all of your programming, all of your classes, all of your camps, all of your administrative fees, all of your birthday parties, all of those fees that you don't see that they do. That's where this additional revenue will come from. So that's where, let's go with that. So now, we've identified the policy, the projects, and the fee necessary. We have our second discussion point for the night, and that is, should we adopt the policy recommendation? Should we assign the costs associated with these projects? And should we accept the fee recommendations? I stand ready for questions.
Any questions from council?
I don't think you really have any other choice, looking at the, first of all, we haven't raised these fees since, is it 2010?
It's actually worse than that. We, in 2009, we raised the annual pass fees for school district residents. The next most common is 2006, where we raised the fees, the annual pass fees for residents and non-residents. The other fees in the ordinance haven't been raised since they were adopted in 2000.
It's amazing. Really. It's been a wonderful, it's been a wonderful opportunity for everybody who wanted to take advantage of our facilities. But now, with the $6 million coming up to repair the North Pool and some of the other expenses we have, I can see no other way out of this but to do this. So I'm voting for it.
And even that, with those fee increases, it's still 50% subsidized by the balance of the community. I mean, it...
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Kathy?
On, Matt, on, I guess, page five of the memo that you shared with us, I don't know that you have that detailed, yeah. I'm looking at the proposed increase of fees
Okay.
to the particular users of the, I'm looking at the rec center fees on this page. DCRC annual passes.
Sure.
Yeah. A lot of these increases are 20%. And I teased John about this last time. You know, the councils didn't do anything for how many years? And now, those are pretty healthy jumps. So I, you know, my concern is, I agree, we have to move these up. I just think those are a heck of a big jump in any given year. And I do think that it will impact your units if we look at, you know, where the dollars and cents are coming from. The individual passes take up, I mean, they bring in a fair amount. I find it hard to think that we wouldn't have some decrease when the, well, I think the out-of-city rate goes from $8 to $15, or 100% increase in a daily pass there. And for a youth resident, it goes from $3 to $5. That doesn't seem like much, but you add those up. I mean, they're hefty percentage jumps here in one year's time. That's my concern about it. I think it's, we've done nothing, we've done nothing, oh my goodness, now we need to do something, we're going to do it. And I'm not sure that's fair to the residents, that we do that in one fell swoop. That just doesn't feel, that doesn't feel right to me.
You know, my comment on that is that our passes are almost ridiculous compared to the outside private entities. If you look at the McConnell or any of these other places, we still have these things so low that almost anybody can afford to go there. And I just, I just think it's the right thing to do now, because the cost of a year pass for a senior here is one-tenth at a better club. So it's, I don't think it's an issue.
I think one of the items that'll be onus when we do these upgrades to the amenities is that they stay competitive with, you know, other deliverers of this kind of, you know, I think, was in the rec center two weeks ago, and, you know, it's showing its age. And, you know, I think it is appropriate that we reinvest in that, but we're going to have to do it really well, because the marketplace is doing it really well. You walk into a lot of these other areas, and it's a nice environment, so. One point of clarification, the $6 million on the pool wasn't to fix the pool, that was a new build, but it was $250,000, I think, to...
But you know, you're right, Chris. It is time to upgrade that facility, because a lot of people are just paying extra money and going nicer facilities. And that was never our original intent, so.
But I hear your point of, you know, trying to make it affordable and try to make it so that every, you know, as John mentioned, that we want everyone to be able to afford to participate here.
And they're big jumps in a year.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you'll see some drop-off, and I think when we see this back, I would like to see some sensitivity work on those numbers. If we lose 10%, are we really going to gain it back in that fee? And I, again, I believe we have to fund for the future, and I think we have to raise it. I just think, I just think no activity and now 20% increases, that bothers me.
Yeah, I think it's really difficult that we have to catch up to what probably should have been done in the past. I thought I heard you say that as part of this, you propose an annual review of the fees. Is that correct?
We do an annual, Recreation does an annual review of their fees, and we do the cost study ordinance every year.
Okay.
The issue is, we examine the ordinance based on the policy. And that's been the issue, is we've always hit the 50%. So given the policy and the intent of the policy, there is no incentive to bring a recommendation forward, because we're hitting the policy.
And that's partly because that capital piece was not in the policy, is that right?
Exactly. As we add that, I think it's important to, there'll be more to examine, and it'll be more interactive. You'll have an opportunity to say, well, what's the capital fund balance for Recreation? Should we raise or lower these percentages? Do we have opportunities here to use pay-as-you-go financing to do some smaller projects? I think, I think this, adding this piece not only does the math better, I think it makes the policy better, because it gives us more to discuss and makes the policy more interactive than it's been, which is why it hasn't been discussed and addressed since 2010.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it tends to force us to take a look at it and do our due diligence each year, rather than saying, well, we hit that 50%, so we're good to go. And I think that that will help to resolve what you're talking about. Now, I don't know what the appetite is on council to have them come up with a different options to get us to that point over a period of time, or just rip the Band-Aid off and do it.
This change is really important to the
I agree.
entire CIP process, and we need to do this tonight so that they can carry on with their work on the CIP. That's my view.
I, you know, I, again, I just think that's a heck of a jump for the taxpayers, and we haven't, I mean, we haven't really even discussed it, except for, in that regard. We had the one meeting, and, well, this is the first council meeting that we've had this. We had a workshop where we discussed this, right? Two workshops where it discussed. But again, I, again, I'm not opposed to solving this problem. I just think it's rather unfair to say we're going to do it in one jump, and here we go.
Well, I'd suggest we just take a...
Mike will agree, this council's in the past
Take a straw vote, Mayor.
They have not wanted to raise the rates. They were always trying to subsidize this thing, and I think you can subsidize it into the ground, and we're sort of heading there, so it's time to move it on. The councils in the past have said, hey, let's not raise the rate. I can remember tons of discussions on this, and now, they didn't want to raise the rates, didn't want to raise the rates. Hey, so, you know, the chickens come home to roost, so it's time to, and these aren't huge rates either. And you look how all these art classes, all these things are subsidized already, and moving into Dublin where you can take subsidized ceramics courses in the city's pan, half of them, and all the other things we're doing, it's pretty phenomenal, so.
Kathy, I don't disagree with you in terms of making, you know, making it slower, but when you look at the senior rates, you go from $100 a year to $120 a year. So, you know, you're less than $2 a month. It's going to be hard to catch anything up on something less than that. Now, when you get into a resident family of four, you're $105, you know, so it feels a little bit bigger, but if you break it down to, you know, what are you gaining per month, the numbers are really pretty small. So I don't disagree that any jump is hard in family budgeting, and, you know, perhaps we would, you know, I know there's a lot of mercy ministries in the community that they could take up their chances if it would preclude a family, but I, you know, I don't know how you're going to do it a whole lot less and come up with anything that would be substantive.
Matt, can you go back to the slide? We had, I think, three questions you needed us to address. Should the administration's recommendation for modifying, so should we adopt what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Kathy, are you a yes or a no?
I am uncomfortable with the, what I would say, no pun intended, jump in the deep pool with the, we didn't do anything for 15 years, and we're going to solve it tomorrow, and here you go. That bothers me, so I'm not happy with that, with the administration of the policy.
That's point three, right? That's bullet point three, the fees itself, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I mean, still, it's the same thing. Before, we're going to subsidize 50%, we're going to, we're still doing that, but now what we're saying is, we've got to catch up, so we're just going to put it all in now. So that is a policy change as well as the fee. I mean, the fee is just the how we're doing it.
Okay, but would you agree the policy of the assigned percentage of costs associated with certain recreation program capital improvements projects be adopted and included? That they start paying for those that way, from a policy perspective, without any numbers in the conversation?
Versus an operational budget or capital budget.
Yeah. Are you in support of a cost recovery kind of policy like that, or not?
I am. It's a timing thing.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I think everybody else is okay with that. Should the administration's recommendation to assign 100% of the costs associated with the reconstruction of the North Pool and future improvements to the OCRC be adopted? So again, not using any numbers other than 100%? Should we try to cost-recover the cost of those capital expenditures out of fees?
Yes.
Are you okay with that?
That's Angel's recommendation, staff's as well.
And you're...
I'm, over what period of time and how, so...
Well, for those two specific projects, for the North Pool and, well, I guess, future improvements to DCRC. I guess the issue is, are we going to start passing those capital expenses on?
I think a distinction that's worth being made to Kathy's point is, these are reconstructions. I don't know that we should try, you know, I think this community has been very committed to health and wellness, and we have paid for the construction of these facilities initially. And now, when it comes time for their maintenance and improvements and replacements, then the users of said facilities should be the body that is burdened with...
Consuming.
Yeah, they're the consumers.
You're using them.
And so they're the ones that ought to, you know, bear the cost of that. If this were health and wellness initiatives that were new, I would say probably not. But reconstruction, in my mind, is what differentiates this from really what our city's intent is.
Okay, then, I think this is where we're going to hit the wall, at least with Kathy. Should the staff's fee recommendation, the numbers, you are probably a no as to these numbers?
I know as to the ramp-up of how, what is the appropriate thing for planning for families, planning for seniors. I mean, this is an important resource to the community. DRC is a hugely valuable and important resource, et cetera. I know, I know no one's suggesting otherwise. I don't want folks to not be able to take and participate in that because we made a jump all at once. And that, to me, I have a problem with. So I'm a no on that as it's currently constructed. In principle, I'm agreeing with it. I'm asking, how do we do this in a little more phased approach from a planning perspective for our residents?
Matt, do you support this chart?
I support this, and I just want to respond to Kathy. If you haven't really raised people's fees for 10 years, 15 years, and you moved your fees from $100... your fees from 100 to $125, they had an unbelievable period of no raises. And it's not a huge raise. If you go to McConnell and join their, their workout center, it costs you $1,080.
And the residents have that option.
And we're moving this up from 100 to $125, this isn't a giant hit. 25 bucks after 15 years of subsidizing this thing? No, I don't agree with you.
Mike, what do you think about the chart?
I think we need to do this, we need to get it done and we need to, in, in light of the CIP process that needs to continue that we've delayed from August, it's, it's not even gonna be held, heard until October. This has to be done.
Christine?
So Matt, just really a quick clarifying question. So the fee increases would all take place all at once on the first of January or would they take place at the current pass holders next renewal?
Next renewal.
Next renewal. That makes a big difference.
The soccer fees are delayed until 1/1/20 to allow some planning for those associations because of the way, so $60,000 of revenue won't actually occur until 2020. But otherwise, yes, 1/1/19 for all the services and as you renew for the annual passes.
So if your renewal date happens to be in January, you're getting it right away, right? But if your renewal date doesn't happen to be until December, you're, you're not.
Correct.
Until December, okay.
So why are you phasing in the program fees but not the others? Did you just say you're phasing in, it's, the soccer's gonna come in later because of, what was your?
The soccer comes in later because we work with a third party to run that program and they budget a year ahead. So if we were to change the fee, we would change what they've planned and put out already as far as their fee structure for 2020. So we have to delay that to help our partner and we wanna continue to partner with them, so we have to delay it.
And, and I wanna partner with the residents, so there you have it.
Kathy, I have a question for you. Because of the nature of how this is being implemented, I, I think about, how would you feel about a proration? So it would still take place in the fiscal year 19, however, it feels a little unfair if your anniversary date happens to fall in January versus someone who happens to fall in December. Would you be amenable to some type of a proration based on that?
I appreciate that. I just think we need to, to give our residents a chance to plan and manage through this. And, and I think there are some ways that we could do this because, I, I mean, some of these, we're adding $100,000 or $22,000 or, you know, I know we're trying to cover some debt service over time. That debt isn't gonna even be incurred for a pool until 2020, right? So we're gonna implement them now, but that's gonna happen then. So again, I think there's some runway here and I would appreciate.
And aren't those?
That is my view.
Those fees are set aside, right, to then pay for later when the pool is going to be reconstructed or whatever, it's set aside. Here's my thoughts on this. I, you know, so for 10 or 12 or however many years, and we're still, I, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that we are subsidizing 50% of the operation of the rec center. And if you take the cost of living for the last 10 years in, in just inflation, people's absolute dollars are going down every year. I, I just think it's, you know, I understand that, that the increase, any increase is, could be concerning, but the, the numbers are in, for me at least, I mean, when you go from $3 to $5, I guess that's a 40% increase, but it's really from $3 to $5 and over the last 10 years, in absolute dollars, that's going down every year, the value of that money that we're getting. And with the 50% subsidized and then these, these resources are being consumed by these very people, if we were spreading this across the whole community, I'd have probably a different view about it. But with the subsidy we're still providing and the relatively modest increases over 10 years of none at all, I think the numbers are reasonable.
Do you think it'd make people feel more comfortable that they could weigh in? Should we have a motion on each of these items? Would that make you feel better? That at least you can go on record, everybody can go on record with a yes or a no?
Well, we still have to have a second reading on the whole thing.
Well, I understand, I'm talking going forward, so.
Only thing I could see.
I just don't wanna belabor this and, and get tied up with the CIP piece as well. Because staff has got a lot of planning to do between now and, and October 8.
Communication's gonna be everything. If, if you're not renewing till December, you know, a, a family hopefully would have the opportunity to set aside the additional, a family of four, the additional $105 for, you know, between now and December. And we will need, well, I think how we communicate this will be very important. And, you know, maybe we do something the first year like we do with Irish Fest tickets. We have a day, if you, if you renew by this day, you hold this year or something. And then any day thereafter, for those people that are really concerned about their budget, maybe we could have a day that purchases would happen at, at current rates and then you would move forward and then we would have, that would have communicated it to everybody and, you know, the folks that aren't gonna renew till December certainly would have enough time to, you know, set aside $10 a month or so so that they could make that $105 by the end of the year.
And Chris, again, the, the, the funding for this, the reconstruction isn't gonna happen in 19, right? So what we're trying to fund here isn't happening in 19, it's happening in 20 and 21 and 22. So again, I think a phasing just seems better, so I, I appreciate that type of, I get.
With that point though, Kathy, if, if we don't impose it now, we're gonna be saving up for that, that's gonna happen in 2022 or whatever.
Right.
And if we wait, talk about a jump, there's gonna be a significant jump if we wait and we don't start accumulating the money now over time.
You know, it's just a shame that, that over the last 15 years, it wasn't a percent a year or 2% a year. I mean, I think it's just a shame, so.
I agree, we're sort of paying for past, you know.
I mean, here we are and, and I, again, I just feel like residents should have some time, so I've, I've made my point.
Anything else, Matt, to go through?
No, that's it.
Okay.
See a second read?
All right, so we will see you back at the October 8 council meeting for a second reading. Resolution 59-18, Ann.
I'm sorry. Authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Metro Data Center for the sponsorship of the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center at 565 Metro Place South. Introduction.
I'll reduce it.
Thanks, Christine. Colleen?
Good evening. For your consideration, tonight is a five-year renewal of the city's financial commitment to the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center. To date, the deck boasts a dozen graduates, many of which still reside in Dublin and more than 110, more than 100 tenants and hotspot members. In a time where coworking space is becoming a new norm for small business, the deck continues to reinvent itself every few year, few years in order to differentiate itself. The deck is more than just affordable rent. The facility offers free entrepreneurial training, shared services, meeting facilities, access to a network of professional services from the deck sponsors such as legal, accounting and lending services, business coaching and counseling from our partners like Rev One Ventures and the Small Business Development Center, an onsite data center and a marketplace of business-to-business connections where over 60% of our tenants conduct business with at least one other tenant. Previously, the city's financial commitment to Metro Data Center has been directed toward the lease rate for the facility, covering some of the common area costs like meeting rooms. In this new contract, we're shifting our dollars away from the physical space and directing it toward an overall sponsorship of the deck, the programming and the management of the facility. The five-year commitment totals $1,477,488. This annual fee decreases each year over the five years, allowing the deck time to slowly move off of the city's funding and potentially even become its own entity. Staff is recommending the approval of this resolution as it supports council's goal toward setting conditions to allow for the creation of innovative businesses in Dublin. And we have Rob Kopp and Chaz Fratell from Metro Data Center and the deck here with us tonight. Between the three of us, hopefully we can answer your questions.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions from council?
Yeah, Colleen, thanks. Colleen, how many of the graduates have actually stayed and, and how's their businesses in Dublin?
Six of the 12 are still in Dublin, nine of the 12 are still in the central Ohio region and 11 of the 12 are in the state of Ohio, so.
So what has the, roughly, if you had to guesstimate, what would be the economic impact to the city of Dublin in terms of income tax, that kind of thing?
I probably don't have dollars and cents, but I would say of the six that are here, I know that they represent about 60 employees. So 60 jobs.
Gotcha. Do we have, that's helpful. Do we have economic development agreements with any of them?
We do not.
We do not. Hold on, I have one other question. Oh, up, up to date, what have our investment dollars, what has the city's investment dollars been?
For the whole 10 years? I would, I have it.
You do?
In my office.
That's fine, you can email it to us later, that's, that's no big deal. I just was, was curious, I was trying to just put some context around what, what there was. So the amount of the 1.477, that's all of those five years combined?
Correct.
Yes? Gotcha. Thanks.
Any questions from council? Kathy, Kathy?
Colleen, I know that we've talked and you mentioned in the memo that there's a lot of change happening in this field right now and what it means to create entrepreneur spaces and startup spaces. Could you share a little bit about what we're seeing? And I guess my question is, we're, we're, we have a five-year horizon here in a fast-changing space, so why a five-year lease in a world that's gonna, it is looking different than it even it did one year ago?
So the, the five-year commitment really helps with the planning because Metro Data Center has a lease on the facility. Most leases are three to five years, so it allows for the, the planning for the actual physical space. What's special about this contract is that each year, we will review the scope of services that are being provided for the city's sponsorship and we have the ability to amend or change and negotiate different, different services for the city's sponsor dollars. But the five-year total really is more because of the way the leases work.
So I'm, I'm wondering in that, again, because there's such an evolution in the configuration of the space, the layout of space, the location of the space, what do we think this is gonna feel like in three or four?
I might look to Rob.
Looking around.
Kathy, have you had an opportunity to tour it?
A while ago.
Yeah.
I, I think what's, what's been special about the deck is because of our partnership with Metro Data Center and with, and with Chaz, helping us over there every day. I believe every year so far, we have made some sort of change to the deck facility as it is, where we have found that the hotspots were very popular, so we added more of them. We found certain office sizes were better than others, so we rearranged. We have updated our cafe, which went from vending machines, which if you haven't been over there lately, the cafe is fantastic now, with sponsors and with new food services. We've added training rooms over the years because we found those were being used more often. So I believe every year of the deck, we have through the partnership been able to, to shift with the trends.
Yeah, real quick, I'm Rob Kopp, president of Metro Data Center, obviously have Chaz with us, so we'll both talk about this. It's both, it's a passion of both of ours. In fact, when I started Metro Data Center, I was a deck tenant. The original deck on Post Road, Chaz Fratell called me and invited me over and, and I just loved the concept of it. So as we built it out, and every year we've done different things within the deck community. In fact, we, we have a large community, the building that we were in right now, in fact, was 98% empty when Metro Data Center moved into the building. Now, I, I'm pleased to say the building is actually completely full, not just with deck tenants, but the entire infrastructure. So, so it has affected the entire building and community in regard to how the deck works. So it's not just the office spaces. In fact, I've always said if we're just selling office spaces, we would have failed, we're building community. And the community works together, the community, we, we have new programming even this year called Inner Circle that Chaz will be able to talk about a little bit as well, but this notion of building community and, and, and teaching companies how to build and how to develop, this is my sixth company that I've been part of and starting up, in Dublin company as, as well, a large Dublin companies. And so my partner, Niles Overly, and I developed Metro Data Center in 2011. In fact, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, and Chaz invited me over, I said, hey, I, he goes, and he has a company called Get You Connected, he said, who do you wanna meet? And I wanted to meet the city manager, Dana McDaniel, and also the CIO of the Ohio Health Corporation, which Chaz introduced me to both of those folks. Glad to say that today and I was able to talk and learn more about what the entrepreneurial community is. So we're very excited to be part of that and, and part of the growth of the deck and part of the fulfillment of the deck vision within the city.
Colleen, can you speak at all to how this integrates with those in our community? You know, there's a lot of this sort of thing happening and many in the private enterprise. Can you articulate a little bit of how this relates to those that are trying to do this in a, in a private enterprise situation?
Are you talking like with Cardinal and Fuse and how individual companies are doing their own smaller innovation?
Well, and we also have, the fellow was here tonight, Brick House Blue is doing office management and they're having, you know, cross, cross relationships or, you know, for vendors to interact with one another and do business with one another. So where, where, how, how do these two, how are they differentiated?
So with traditional coworking, you get office space. With the deck, you're getting office space, but it is at a reduced rate so that it's affordable for startup companies. There's an application process to get in, so not everybody that wants to come to the deck can get into the deck. We look at what industry they're in, we look to see if they have a business plan, we look to see if they've, have their ideas vetted first. So again, it's not like walking into any coworking space and saying I want to rent an office. So we do vet them. We work with Rev One Ventures because they have a very large pool of people that also want to go into their incubator. Those that they vet but don't have room for, they become referrals to us, so we actually go and seek those that Rev One has already vetted. And then I look at the training programs that we provide and although other coworking spaces will have training classes and networking opportunities, I don't think that they're at the level of ours. With, with lots of entrepreneurial training, working with the SBDC and Rev One, they're very targeted toward startup companies. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Chaz, did you wanna say something?
First off, I apologize for my.
Walk all the way up here, might as well say something.
Coach Chaz. I, I apologize for my dress, I came straight here from soccer, so I, I apologize for not being a little bit more appropriately dressed, but I just wanna say that it's been my honor to, for the last nine years to serve Dublin, not only as a resident, but managing the operations of, of the deck and, and seeing hundreds of companies that have, that have come through and, and we wouldn't necessarily call them all graduates, but many of them, for whatever reason, would go back home to work or many of the businesses, especially when the deck first got started, was during a time of economic, you know, pain in our country and in our state and in our community. And so many people that had been laid off for whatever reason or misplaced from their, from their jobs, started their own business to be able to survive. And so we helped them for some of those early years to make, to make money by hanging out a shingle and being able to, to do that at the deck. And many of them were hired back into the corporate world over a period of time. Other businesses, there again, for whatever reason, we all know that, that there's an 80% failure rate of businesses over, you know, a three to five year period of time and I, I'm very confident in being able to say that, that we reduced that failure rate pretty significantly. And we are able to, through education and keeping folks with business plans and, and those kinds of things, we're able to reduce those numbers and, and create much more success than I think in, in anywhere else. So a combination of everything that we do really makes a big difference in comparison to somebody that, that is just looking for space and, and, you know, maybe some free beer and wine during the day in another place that might be very beautiful, but certainly doesn't provide all of the love that we surround them with offered by the city of Dublin.
And Chaz brings up a good point, I think stressing the community of the deck really is probably its biggest differentiator, that it really is a place where the tenants support one another, they hire one another and they're provided with counseling and mentorship from one another, where that doesn't necessarily happen at just traditional coworking places.
Yeah, I, I saw a lot of brainstorming going on when I was there. You've done a wonderful job, Chaz and Rob, we appreciate all the efforts and I know we really got into some partnerships with even some of the other areas north of us or Marysville and, and so forth, so we had a lot of that going on and, and it was kind of a new thing when it started. You guys were really on the cutting edge and the data center's really impressive and it's really helped serve the rest of the metro center, which is important to us as we try and revitalize that, that, that particular office park.
Any other questions for council?
If you were gonna add two more things or three, what is on your wish list of how to make the center even better, bigger? I guess I shouldn't ask this after all the other questions we've had tonight on dollars and cents.
I'll, I'll respond to that. Every single year from the very first. Every single year, from the very first time I got involved with, which was right after the grand opening, Dana, every single year, challenged us to be better, and challenged us to continue to do what we were doing well, even better, but to always come up with fresh ideas. So every year, we tried to develop something that's brand-new, that is not being done in central Ohio, maybe across the country. And so we've developed an opus, which is obviously developing your masterpiece, and we're trying to pass that on to businesses. Many businesses don't realize that the more they work together, the more they give back to the community, the more they do things beyond just thinking of themselves and their own business, they're more successful that way. People want to do business with them when they're more community-oriented. And that's, we've been doing that now for about six months, and it's starting to take hold, where more and more of the businesses are becoming more that way. And what I see there too, is you're gonna see then more of those businesses, I think. We just had another one here in the last couple of weeks that just moved their family to Dublin. So I think more of that will start to happen as a result of that. So, it's constantly looking at new things that we can do to be unique.
Yeah, that's good. Any other questions from council? Is that it Kathy? Good? Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thanks, guys. Resolution 60-18.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a triple-net commercial lease agreement for a primary term of five years with GTN Corporation for the Dublin Village Tavern property located at 2729 South High Street.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Christina. Dan?
Good evening, members of council. Since 1999, the city has leased city-owned property at 2729 South High Street to the GTN Corporation, whose president is Tim Pachano, and who has operated the property as a restaurant known as the Dublin Village Tavern. The city has determined that releasing the property to GTN under appropriate terms and conditions remains in the best interest of the city and the immediate area. Council has expressed a desire to continue to operate the property as a restaurant, because it provides an important destination, neighborhood gathering place, and a generator of pedestrian activity for that particular portion of the historic district. That's in keeping too with the original intent of council. Retaining the city's ownership and allowing an ongoing lease for this use remains the most effective method to achieve council's intent. Staff provided a rental history of the property and the various improvements that have been put into the property over time, a history of the lease with the city over the past nearly 20 years. The administration has negotiated new lease terms with GTN, and GTN is agreeable to the terms and the agreement that is before you tonight. Just to highlight a few of the key terms of the agreement, it'll be a five-year lease with one five-year option to renew. The lease remains a true triple-net lease, although the landlord contributes to building improvements that may exceed the term of the lease itself. It is an old building, as you know, and in that it's a triple-net, the owner takes on a lot of that responsibility for the building, and hence probably a lot of cost. That is why our basic rent will increase from $11.08 per square foot to $24 per square foot, really giving, I would say in the marketplace, that's still competitive, but on the lower end, but that's because I think there's a lot of risk in the building, given its age and condition and things that need to be done to it, that he's willing to take on. The lease rate shall increase 2% every year of occupancy, and the area will be leased, it will increase from 1,097 square feet to 1,654 square feet. And that's because, you may recall from the report, that there was an addition that GTN put on the building at one point, and because that was their investment, they were relieved of the lease square footage of that. That's being added back in, because we feel those dollars have been recovered at this point. The first year of the lease will be $39,696, to be increased, as I mentioned. The staff recommends approval of this resolution and the accompanying lease agreement. And Mr. Pachano cannot be here this evening, he conveyed to me that he agrees to the terms, and that is okay to go ahead and bring us forward, despite his not being available this evening. So I want to express our appreciation to Mr. Pachano, GTN Corporation, and the Dublin Village Tavern for their commitment to the community, and congratulate them on their past and future success, and I hope that council will see it to approve this agreement this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Any questions from council?
Just a quick one, do we know what the real estate taxes are on that? I'd like to know that, just, it just, the lease calls for him to pay it. I think it's probably a significant number, so I'd just be interested to know what that is.
He is required to pay. And also, thanks for bringing that up, there is a component-
There is a component to the lease, that we will be removing some of the parking spaces from the building that he's been paying real estate taxes on, that really are public parking, so.
Anything else from council? Hearing nothing? Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution 61-18?
Authorizing the city manager in tune to agreements with Rumpke of Ohio Inc. for the collection, transportation, and delivery for disposal or processing of solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and during special events and acceptance and processing of recyclable materials.
Megan?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Christina.
Good evening, members of council. The city entered into contracts for collection services and recycling services with Rumpke in September of 2014. The terms of the contracts were for three years and terminated at the end of 2017, with the option to extend for 2018 and 2019. The decision was made in 2017 to extend the contracts for one year through 2018, and we still have one more extension year option on both of those contracts remaining. Since early 2018, Dublin staff have been working with SUECO staff and the community consortium members in the region to conduct a competitive bid process for solid waste services. The tenant entities making up the consortium were restructured this year into smaller groups, with the goal of attracting competition and more favorable bids. Ultimately, the city of Dublin and Washington Township were matched together and went out to bid. We received one responsive bid for recycling services and collection services from Rumpke. The Rumpke bid results are outlined in detail in your memo, so I will just summarize those. With regard to recycling services, the existing contract with Rumpke will be extended for a term of one year through 2019 at $0 per ton. Knowing that recycling processing pricing is increasing, the consortium decided in advance to exercise the extension option and seek bids for recycling services for two years, 2020 and 21, with the option to extend for two more years through 2022 and 2023. Rumpke submitted a base bid with a flat rate of $35 per ton to process recyclables, which was not unexpected. Rumpke also submitted an alternate bid that includes a risk-reward profit-sharing mechanism, which staff is recommending as the lowest and best bid option for recycling services, because the per-ton processing is capped at $35, and there is the potential to receive a rebate up to $20 per ton. With regard to collection services, Rumpke submitted five bid options for consideration. Rumpke is Dublin's current service provider at a price of $16.22 per household per month through 2018. The potential extension year 2019 price is $16.71 per household per month. The bids included prices for a variety of options, including three-year and five-year terms, unlimited collection of solid waste, cart contents only, an option where Rumpke would provide the refuse cart, option where Rumpke would provide the recycling cart. CSAC's recent recommendations to city council a couple of meetings ago were taken into consideration as part of staff's bid analysis, and it was determined the bid options submitted by Rumpke that included carts, whether purchase or rental, are not competitive at this time, and therefore are not viable options. Analysis of the bid options supports staff recommendation of alternate bid number two, which provides a continuation of our current service, which is status quo, for a three-year period at competitive pricing. The first-year price is the same price we would incur with the one-year extension, if we were to go with that, of the current contract, and then there's a 7% increase in years two and three of the new contract. We would expect to see larger increases if we were to bid one-year contracts for each of those years. Therefore, the three-year contract term would also provide the opportunity to work with SUECO and Rumpke to explore options, including grant opportunities to expand our existing two-cart collection system area, and to further pursue CSAC's recommendations over the next three years. Staff recommends city approval, city council approval of Resolution 61-18, authorizing the city manager to enter into two separate agreements with Rumpke for collection services and recycling services. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
About this in-the-container business and all that thing, we're not doing that right?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
No. The services that would continue under the three-year contract would be status quo.
The same as what we have now?
Same, exactly, as what you have now, different price.
Megan, in light of the fact that the consortium's intent wasn't really realized, we were hopeful that we would get more bids and more competitive bids, and that proved to not be the case, is there any thought to the consortium coming back together holistically, and seeing if there could be savings realized with a larger pool of people?
So what we plan on doing is, once all of the communities in the region have entered into contract for the next time period, we will reconvene as a region, and we will likely reach out to those other hauling contractors that did not submit bids, to gain their input into what we might do in the future to increase competition. The process was successful for a couple of communities, we did see one hauler submit a bid on two other communities. They didn't end up getting the award, is my understanding, but that's a step in the right direction, that we actually saw one hauler submit bids for residential. We just have some haulers out there that haven't entered the residential collection industry, and that's what we need to work towards, getting some of those haulers to be interested in.
And have we identified what it would cost to self-serve this? You know, a number of communities, most notably the city of Columbus does a self-service. Have we done any number crunching of what that would look like for us, just to make sure, since we don't have any competitive bid process, that we only got one bid back, of at least identifying what it would take to have an in-house system?
So I'm not sure the last time that that was taken a look at, it hasn't been looked at in the last few years. I don't know, Dana, do you know when the last time that might have been evaluated, performing those services in-house?
I did an analysis on that like 20 years ago, that's been a really long time. Then the fleet technicians threatened me with my life, because they didn't want to work on trash trucks, but other than that, it's been a lot of years ago since we addressed it.
I'm sure out there somewhere, there's a number that's critical mass. Somebody's done that.
Yeah. But it's typically been in reverse, every city in central Ohio got out of the business and went contractual. There are a few, with the exception of Columbus, who still runs-
I'm not suggesting we do, I'm just saying that's maybe the only other way we can see to verify our numbers and justify the action. That's all. Thank you.
Well, one service that SUECO provides us is, they keep tabs on pricing all around the state and all around the country, so they perform some validation of the pricing for us, and they've indicated, based on the data that they have from elsewhere, that the pricing that we receive is competitive. So that's one thing that you can be assured of.
Any other questions from council?
I just wanted to point out that of 38 communities in the Franklin County area, as you see in the memo here, only six do not charge residents, so 32 of the communities actually pass that cost along.
Yeah. Nice job, Megan, you always do a good job negotiating this kind of thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Take us where we gotta go, appreciate it.
Anything else from council? Okay, Anne?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
That concludes the normal part of our agenda, under other, Bridge Park update and market proposal.
Correct. Thank you, members of council, and the mayor said it exactly right, Crawford Hoyng is here this evening to provide an update on Bridge Park, and also a proposal regarding a permanent indoor public market. Staff provided you an informational memo in your packet, and we have a combination of myself and Terry Fogler, and Greg Daniels is here, representing the city of Dublin, for any questions we might be able to help answer, but of course, I will hand this over to the folks from Crawford Hoyng for their presentation. And thank you for the time to do this this evening.
Good evening, members of council, Nelson Noda from Crawford Hoyng, good to see you all again. I'm here tonight to introduce Matt Starr and a few other people who are here with us, you can see Bob Hoyng, my partner here in the audience, as well as Jessica Rexer from Crawford Hoyng as well. Matt is gonna take the lead on walking through the update of Bridge Park, as well as the proposal that we'd like to bring in front of you tonight, the specific enhancements of the Dublin community, which is the year-round public indoor market. Matt is gonna be assisted tonight with guests from the North Market, which is of course our only year-round interior public market that we have. Jeff Pangonis, he's the president of the Board of Directors for the North Market, he's also a principal at MKSK. Clients include Ohio State, the Wexlers, NRI, pretty much anybody in the city who is the who's who. Rick Harrison Wolf is also here tonight, he's the executive director of the North Market, he's been in the North Market for the last five years, and is widely credited with turning around the North Market into the great place that it is today, that we all enjoy going to. Before I turn it over to Matt, I really just wanted to say thank you to council who's here tonight, both present and past councils, for everything that you guys have done in terms of creating the vision that's resulted in the amazing transformation that's going on right now in downtown Dublin. I've been a member of this community in one way or the other for all but four years of my 42 years, back to 1976, and I'm really excited to be able to stand here tonight and tell you guys that Dublin is now in the running for the most prestigious and high-profile office tenants that are in our region right now, looking for space. This is the first time that that's happened in some time, since the pendulum has started to swing back towards walkable urbanism. We're competing very hard against Grandview, now not just one, but two walkable developments in Grandview that are right there, Easton, obviously a short north. And what really has happened here, and now Franklinton as well, you've probably been reading this in the news, so the stakes are high, the big employers that are out there are looking for places that are exactly like what we've all created together in downtown Dublin. Just the ones that we're talking to today are over 1,000 jobs and over $1 million in annual payroll tax, that are considering coming to downtown Dublin as a result of the Bridge Park and the downtown Dublin investments that we've made as a group. So I wanted to applaud all of our efforts, say what we're doing is right. Payroll tax is obviously the lifeblood of our community, and I'm just very excited to say things are going very, very well. And so here we are tonight to really talk more about the Dublin market, we're gonna get into that here shortly. We passionately want what is best for our community. For many of us, it's not only just our workplace, we work here, but it's also our homes, we're members of the community, we have been for a very long time, we want what's best, and we put on the Dublin Farmers Market every week at Bridge Park. That costs us money at Crawford Hoyng, as well as employees' time. We have employees that are donating four to six hours every week to go and make sure that the Farmers Market is open at Bridge Park. And, you know, we do that because we want what is best for our community, best for our little corner of the world over there at Bridge Park, but also the community as a whole, because we are citizens and residents as well. And we see this potential indoor market, this year-long market that's coming, as something that will help position downtown Dublin and the city of Dublin for success in the long term. And that's all what we really want, is to add another draw to downtown Dublin, to add another draw to Bridge Street District as a whole, and make this, give it longevity, give it the best chances as it has to become really the heart and soul of the community for a long time. As we've been building the community, we've been bringing in additional, different design consultants to add to the flavor and make sure that it has this feeling that it is something unique. We're now up to six in different hands on Bridge Park in terms of the design of the buildings. And, you know, we are just really excited to present this indoor market, it's something that could be done actually within the framework of the existing development agreement. And this is something that can really put Dublin on the map, it's something that other municipalities are all coveting, they all want, we have a chance to be the ones to bring it. And it'd be another way to set Dublin apart as the premier place, not just in central Ohio, but probably in the state of Ohio, in order to work and to live. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Starr, who will take it from here. Thank you.
Thanks, Nelson. Matt?
Thank you. Appreciate it. This person?
Thank you.
Just wanted to set out the brief agenda for our presentation, and I'll try my best to look this way while looking this way, so give me a second here. First, we want to give you an update on just where we are on the development, show you where we're at, what's coming. We want to talk about the market, we were here about a month ago, Jessica was, talked a little bit about that, I'll just hit on a few of those points. One of the other things we did is, we went out and put a survey out to the community, that was Dana's recommendation, and we talked about this. We got real good response out of that survey, so I'm gonna share the results of that with you. Talk a little bit about the history of our attempts to land grocery and food, which we always thought was an important part of a mixed-use community here. Then I'll introduce Rick and Jeff, we'll talk about the things we've done, we took a tour, we're gonna take another one, and then we'll get a little more details, and obviously, I'm here to answer questions too, so I know there'll be opportunity for that. So what you see up here today is- So what you see up here today is obviously what, and I know you received a memo that had some of these statistics, and there's some slight differences, I think, in the total numbers. They're very close, I think. It's just when one was published versus the other. So there's some slight differences. Anything that's listed up here as current is everything that's already really been developed today. So it would obviously be what we call blocks A, B, and C, and then what we call Z over here on the west side. So the numbers you see there, in total square footage units, is what is built. What is under construction is everything that is in blue up here. Block H, we're building townhouses. We've just started the pads on D block. And obviously, you see an office building rising here on the corner at the roundabout, in A block. And then what's listed as future, obviously, we did our best guess here. We see the demand for office. We've continued to talk about office, add office. F and G is covered under the current development agreement. J and K is not. So that would be something we would have to address in the future. Occupancies here, so just wanted to touch on that briefly. Office leasing, everything that's been built to date, 100% leased. And which really led us to get moving on the A office building, which we've already leased a full floor on, and then add more office to D block, which I think you've heard in some of our other presentations. Our retail and our restaurant is about 85% today. That's leased, not necessarily open. There's several that are under construction or in design, so we're very happy with that. We've really, I'm sure you've noticed if you've been over there, we've really held out this main corner here at Bridge Park Avenue in Riverside. It's such an important corner. We want to get the right opportunity. So everyone has always said, "This is where I want to be. This is where I want to be," for obvious reasons, the bridge and the park. We've really held that back for something unique. We've had some disagreements with that in our office. You know, there's opportunities to do deals there, but we want something unique there. So we've sort of held back on that. And our residential, we're at about 70% today. We're pretty happy with that. We have been, obviously, leasing up. We're now leasing into our own turnover, so we have units turning over. People are moving for jobs, buying homes. And we've continued to deliver, you know, units on a different pace, right? So in B block, for example, this building delivered in March. The units that line the garage delivered in May. You know, this building here in June. So we continue to lease what we're delivering. And most importantly, we don't have any new product coming online until spring of '20. So we feel very confident we'll have these leased, if not by the end of the year, into the first quarter next year. You know, most importantly, what I wanted to highlight is the jobs. And what this is meant to represent is total jobs and what we consider new jobs. So 420 total office jobs, obviously, that's great. How many new jobs, right? Are we just moving people, relocating people from other locations? Which, it's important to understand, but would those tenants have gone somewhere else if they didn't come here, which is, we know probably the case with a couple of them? So the other point I want to make is, you know, the retail and restaurant jobs, obviously, are all new jobs. That's just the total job count. Some of those may be, you know, part-time jobs. But still, the numbers that we estimated, and I've given the information to Angel. She's going to corroborate what the payroll tax dollars are. Our best estimate today is about 450,000 of new payroll tax dollars have been generated with the development. And then, obviously, you know, when you look at these numbers, what we're building and what we could build as far as office goes, the ability to generate additional payroll tax dollars here is really pretty substantial. Even if you look at, you know, a ratio like this, which is maybe 50% of the jobs are new. And as Nelson indicated, we're probably in the running today for four or five tenants that are anywhere from 40,000 to 75,000 square feet. So, you know, and most of these would be new jobs to Dublin, and central Ohio for that matter. So that's important. I'll stop there for a second, see if you have any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing done. Carry on.
All right. So this is where, Jessica had presented this a few weeks ago. One of the questions that came up, seasonal markets. We have finalized that we are going to have a Thanksgiving market on the Saturday before Thanksgiving, nine to noon, pretty exciting, different vendors, hopefully turkeys and pumpkins and all that good stuff. So that's going to happen. We're talking about a holiday market somewhere early December, probably not the week of the Big Ten Championship game, but probably the week after that. So we're working through that as well. So, survey. We wanted to take a survey. Let's get feedback. We kept it short and sweet. It was posted through various social channels. It was on Dublin News and 90. You could click through, take the survey. 471 responses. We thought that was pretty good. We were happy to get that amount of feedback. Obviously, the feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and I hope you can read this. But if not, I'll highlight. How many times have you been to the market? You know, 56% one to two, and 44% had been there three or more times. So repeat visitors, which was good. We had a lot of repeat vendors, just due to the nature of getting started later in the year. How far did you travel to get to the market? Less than 10 minutes, almost 80%. And when you go out to 20 minutes, it's almost everybody. So it's very local. It has a very local flavor. You go, you see your neighbors, you see your friends, people you work with. So it had that nature. What do you like best about the market? And I think the first two are really interesting. Location and convenient parking. Obviously, Worthington's been a farm market that's existed for a long time. It's a central location, but it's not convenient to park. And we hear that from our vendors. People come here, they know they can get in, they can buy goods, they can get in their car, and they can go home. That's important to them. And then variety of vendors. You could choose multiple choice. That's why, you know, these don't add up to 100%. Variety of vendors. We feel like we can do better there next year. And that was a lot of the open-ended feedback. We asked open-ended questions. And, you know, five out of eight people still felt that, you know, we had a good variety of vendors. So then we get to the permanent market. Would you support a permanent indoor public market at Bridge Park? And 90% said they would, which is really good. Obviously, we were happy to see that number. How often would you visit? 55%, 55% say once per week. I'll be interested in Rick. We haven't had a chance to talk about that number. You know, that's pretty frequent visitor traffic, I would feel, and 28% obviously, once a month. So people feel like they're going to use it. They know it's going to be good because it's Dublin. They've been to the existing Farmers Market. They feel good about that. So at this point, I'm going to introduce Jeff and Rick. I'll just talk briefly about these images. We took a trip on the 9th of July. We took a day trip down to Atlanta. We went and saw three permanent public markets. We saw Pont City Market. We saw Crag Street Market. I would describe those more as food halls. I think there's interesting things you can take away from them. And then we went to a place called Sweet Auburn Market, which are some of the images up here at the top. Very different, in a historic neighborhood. That market is about 100 years old as well. That was a typical market. Produce, meat, fish, multiple vendors. Was a vibrant place the day we were there. Actually, we were there probably at the wrong time of the day, but it was still a pretty active place. So we can take a lot from each of these. You know, that's what Cameron Mitchell does best. They go out and they look at these restaurants, and they take the best of the best, and they try to make it better. We're planning a trip to New York as well. Chelsea Market, you see on here, is one of the better ones that's known out there. There's several others that we can visit there. One thing I didn't touch on though was, you know, how did we arrive at this? One of the things we always wanted was grocery here, and we always wanted it. We always felt it would come later as we developed this project. You know, we had residents there. We had people working there. The parking was there. Some of the other public elements were there. And we were negotiating grocery leases with two of the bigger grocers in town. During both those processes, those negotiations, Amazon bought Whole Foods. And it was already a difficult challenge to land those users because they want what they have in central Ohio today. They want a big store, and they want surface parking, and we don't have that. And while they do it in other markets, they can't think that way. Their mentality doesn't work that way in central Ohio. They just figure you come in and you park in the surface lot. And, you know, as I said, Amazon comes in and buys Whole Foods during the negotiation, and it just sort of stopped everything, sort of. The negotiations were kind of over at that point. So we regrouped. You know, we thought about, you know, what were we going to do? Or do we not have grocery? That was a consideration. We're surrounded by grocery at Bridge Park. You can point in any direction. Trader Joe's, Whole Foods, Kroger has two stores, Giant Eagle, everybody's there. Fresh Time. I'm probably forgetting somebody. So, you know, I've known Jeff a long time. We've worked together for 14 years on various projects. I got to meet Rick, I think, in early, late spring. We go to Rick's office. You know, he kind of probably chuckles a little bit, like, "Everybody wants to do this. Why are you guys, why can you guys do it?" And he showed me a stack of applications in his office of vendors. That was, "This is a fishtail or not? This high? This high?" High. Lot of vendors. So, you know, he picks the best of the best, and there's a lot more that were in that pile. He just doesn't have room to accommodate them. Obviously, we've had a ton of interest. We had 166 people. We have 40 people. So why can't we do this? That's what we started asking ourselves. Why can't we do this? So with that, I'll stop talking for a minute and let you guys, Rick Harrison Wolf, Jeff Pongonas, just talk a little bit about the North Market, how they're here, how we can work together.
Take it away. Welcome.
Hi. Rick Harrison Wolf, Executive Director, North Market. Thank you for having me. These gentlemen in Crawford Hoyng were introduced through a board member, actually. It was in February. Brought to my attention, and this is, it is very common, when you say a lot of new developments, not just here either, that are looking for a grocery. And that's, they're contracting, not expanding, and that's not just here. And that's because of the online businesses, the delivery business, a number of reasons. And Matt's exactly right. I probably, in five years, have had, within central Ohio and outside, at least 10, 15 folks say we want to open a public market. And the difference, I guess we'll start there, between a public market versus something we visited, a food hall. We're a nonprofit organization. Our landlord is the city, and partner is the city of Columbus. The nonprofit organization took over in the late '80s for many, many years. From 1876 until the late '80s, it was city-owned and city-run. There are a few of those still left in the country. Cleveland's West Side Market is still city-owned, city-run. They're looking to get out of that business, as most cities have across the nation, and go into a nonprofit like us to take it over. So they brought the project. They actually invited me up to Bridge Park, gave me the tour. And I had not, honestly, I've been back in Columbus about six years. I grew up here, but left for a long, long time. I hadn't been up here since I worked at Wine dot Lake, which I believe they don't call any longer. But, and it was a golf range. We'd stop by when I'd come home from work. And I was quite amazed to see, I mean, it was a bit of an oasis, to be quite honest with you, coming up Riverside and seeing what they've done. So right off the bat, I said, "Well, this is a good start." And then going through the plan, and the future plan of the housing and the offices and everything, the hotel that goes with it, it really, to me, after hearing lots and lots of proposals all over central Ohio, "We want a public market," this seemed like a great opportunity. North Market, as I said, 1876, we have a very strong brand. We have a million and a half, 2 million people through our doors a year. And I believe, you can't do this just anywhere, public markets and food halls, going back to that. A food hall really is usually a privately-owned market with just prepared foods. And there's over 100 right now, and many more being built across America, and actually, the world. And it really is somewhat of a new phenomenon since I've been doing what I'm doing. It's five years. And it all really started with the public market. You know, public markets were there to provision. 1876, that's where you bought everything. Food, blankets, probably horse saddles, all those sorts of things. And obviously, now that the grocery came, the public market went away. But the food hall is sort of the new iteration, but mostly food halls are just prepared foods. And it's a very different thing. This, the thought process here, is that this also has the fresh food piece to it, which is very important. It's the hardest part of the business. That's why you see food halls don't have produce, usually a butcher, fish, poultry for that matter, because those are the most difficult businesses to be in, because you cannot compete with the groceries, the Amazons of the world. So hence why you usually only see them in public markets, which are run by nonprofits. Our mission right at the top is to incubate and support local independent business. So the model here, what we've talked about is exactly what we do. And that is bringing local, independent businesses in, and also that fresh category, which without the ability to get a grocery, hopefully, we can get, you know, a third of this project to be fresh merchants, where you have a local butcher, you have a local produce, and so forth.
I think the first time you told me you thought it could work was when you couldn't get up to Vassal at ForFest.
Well, that's okay. I can go back to that was, I mean, from when I saw the proposal of what the future is going to look like, but I did come up to ForFest, and I have visited the Farmers Market, which I will tell you this, there are more Farmers Markets these days than farmers, which is great. Every community, every community wants a Farmers Market, and I think that's fabulous. Unfortunately, there's usually not enough farmers to go around. But for a first year at this, the amount of farmers and fresh goods, bakers, top-notch Columbus bakers as well, not just somebody baking bread and throwing it in a tent. They pulled together really quite a great assortment of vendors for this market for a first year ago. Very impressive. But so I did come up for Muirfield. We went to ForFest after. And as I said, I grew up in Columbus, and when I was in high school, the continent was a thing. I don't think I've seen, and that was, what, the Thursday night or the Friday nights? I don't think I've seen that many people in one place since the continent as ForFest. And that was very impressive. And everybody, very diverse, all over the place. Obviously, there's a golf tournament going on. That's a special time of the year here in this community. But every time I've been to the Farmers Market and this development, it's a lot of people from everywhere. You have your hotel guests. You obviously have a lot of residents. I believe people are coming up from other parts of central Ohio to see this Bridge Park and be in Dublin. So it's, there's a lot of great reasons why I think this would be a good partnership for the market, because obviously, we're a nonprofit. We can't afford to lose money, or even, we can't afford risk, North Market. I mean, we operate on very slim margins, let's just say. That's part of the mission. But I've been very impressed with this group of, with these folks and the development in this community in general.
You know, back when we started this vision, this talk, we would hope that we'd get that baker that, and to John, John really had the idea. But the cost of the leases for these individuals really don't make economic sense for the small baker inside of Bridge Street at the square footage cost, the butcher, the produce guy, all that. And yet, with this concept, you can put it all together. And I know I saw one just like this. Was it Ohio City up in Cleveland?
That's, yes, that's there, and that's right.
Incredibly vibrant, and you can get anything you want in there. I mean, it's amazing. I would suspect there'll be some lunchtime kind of, dinnertime kind of venues like at North Market.
100%. I mean, our business is, we're about a third fresh foods. We have a butcher. We have produce, a fishmonger, cheese. It's about a third bakery confection gifts, and the other third is prepared foods. West Side Market in Cleveland is about 90% fresh foods, which, that's a problem also. That's just not the way people shop any longer. So the balance is very important. The market is now, North Market is, the people walking through the doors dictate what the merchant mix really is. In our rent structure, the lowest rent is the fresh foods, and the highest is prepared foods. So essentially, everybody subsidizes the fresh foods, because that produce guy has the toughest life. His things don't last very long. So that's the model. And we've created, with the help of my board when I came onboard, to figure out a proper structure to keep these folks churning and in business. And obviously, the incubator piece, Jenny started in North Market. Now she has over 30-some doors across the country. Bubbles T is another fellow. I know he's up in here at Dublin. He started in the market. Now he has about eight or nine. So there's a lot of these smaller guys that very quietly are expanding outside of our doors, and I have more that want to do that. And that's obviously, I think, a great, that's some good synergy here for some folks that I think would fit very well in this market as well, that are now with us.
Yeah, you're a sort of a dream come true. I know, we put a lot of pressure.
Why, thank you.
We put a lot of pressure on Terry over the years to do what Mike said, you know, to make this thing really work. We, you know, to make this thing really work. We needed some craft food guys. And obviously, the economics doesn't work for renting a, front of a building. So, no, this could be, this could be the solution to, just rounding this project out and making it one of the coolest places in central Ohio with your help. And we really appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so far, Crawford Hoying has been a really good partner in all this. And they've lived up to all our expectations and then some, so, really a good team to work with. And I'm sure they wouldn't let you guys down either.
We get a lot of phone calls, and this is one where we've, you know, actually taken the bait.
Yeah.
And been great to work with. But then, like I said, I believe in, in Dublin, and I believe in, I mean, the community clearly supports, the market's a great example, ForFest just, the market clearly supporting this project.
And I worked with you guys. I worked with you guys in the 90s, upgrading the outside of your structures and stuff. And you were good partners, and I understand, you know, you were non-for-profit, but you hung in there, and it's just a really neat, my mother used to shop in the old market, and so.
We're on our third building, and that would be the one we're in right now. And it moved in 95, outside the, when I was a kid, the Quanza Hut was there, which was about to fall down.
Yep.
So it was either move or let it fall down. And luckily, the city of Columbus is a great partner, and, and we're a community amenity. And that's really what public markets are and should be.
Yeah. Well, you're going to have a new great partner, hopefully. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Jeff, is there anything you want to add?
I just want to express support from the board's perspective, both our executive committee and our Board of Advisors. Board of Advisors are up to speed on the project. Excited about the partnership with the developer, with the city, and look forward to, you know, walking down the path here and seeing what we can come up with.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Cool.
So where, where do we put it? This is the D block that you've seen before, so we're really proposing to put it on the ground floor of the parking garage. And your first thought was, that's not very exciting. Well, the parking garage has been designed a little bit differently. It's about 18-foot clear in that parking garage, so we have very good clear height in there. We designed this to have the ability, you can sort of see ghosted in here a little bit, do some roll-up garage doors, five of them potentially along the front, so you can create this open-air environment. Haven't really taken many steps in laying it out inside. We do have a couple loading docks in here and trash, which we've sort of moved inboard off the street, different than what we talked about at our parking discussion last week. So we started thinking about some of those things. We, we were really planning this, accommodating for just a traditional grocer. And obviously, as I told you, we, we went down a different path on it. Obviously, we're building the garage, you know, and this space is, is here. So that's the idea on, on where we would locate it. You know, one issue we're going to have to deal with is, you know, letting people know it's back here, right? So how do we get people back there? So signage and wayfinding is going to be important, probably, you know, at one of these corners. We're going to have to think through that, bring that to you to talk about that. You've got to let people know it's there. It's going to be successful if, if people can find it. And it's not going to survive just on the people that are here. It's obviously, again, a community asset.
You know, Matt, this really will be the North Market.
That's right. We did say that.
Get it?
Did say that.
Yeah. You have to rename it and pull down the rooster.
This is the budget, really, to build it out, and, you know, the hard costs are really, all the mechanical systems we have to bring into this, heating, cooling, electrical capacity, design fees, furniture, this is anywhere from the hoods, the freezers, the sinks, tables, the chairs. We've talked about a lot, a lot of that with Rick. The pre-opening costs, marketing, some payroll, soft costs would be technology. We talked how important it was to have a common point-of-sale system across all the vendors, signage, legal and insurance costs, and some contingency dollars. Obviously, we, we haven't wrestled this all the ground. We haven't, we haven't designed it. We, we sort of know what can be financed with the bond structure that we're proposing. We think it can be accomplished for this. Obviously, you're already starting with the shell. You have the box already, so that helps tremendously. These would be the next steps. I probably left an important one off the top, which is bring a development agreement amendment back to you, new community authority board. I could talk about that for a second. Design. We, we haven't finalized our agreement with, with the North Market. What specifically is their scope of services? How do we engage with them? We have talked about that. We obviously have staff already managing the physical assets onsite. We really want them to, to manage the business, procure the vendors, that's what they specialize in, putting that right mix together. The garage is obviously underway. You see the site work will start pouring within the next 30 days, hopefully, you know, you'll see the garage coming out of the ground. Idea would be to open this in spring of '20. And then Farmer's Market would, would hopefully extend further and be right in front of this block, obviously, and carry, carry through to, to C Block where it is today. You know, we're proposing to pay for this, the 4-9, with, with utilization of the new community authority sales charge. We, we put that in place when we set up the development. What it would do is, it would levy a half percent, for lack of a better term, sales tax on all the Bridge Park property, retail sales within that property. Incidentally, that projected amount that it would raise is about $5 million when you work backwards in what it could support. So, it can pay for itself. The market in and of itself, as, as you've heard from Rick, I've shared our numbers with them, his finance team has sort of vetted it. We hope to break even on that business. If there's a little money, we'll put it in the piggy bank, because we're going to have to replace the tables and the chairs and the hoods and all those things over time. So, we've planned for 25-ish vendors. I think it's TBD, really. We're going to have to go through, lay it out. You know, some of them are going to be bigger than others, some of them will be, will be smaller. So, we want to be able to accommodate different types of users. North Market has 32, is that correct?
35.
35, for, by comparison's sake, you know. So, working with them is going to be good, because they have an opportunity, you know, they're working in a building that was built, I believe, in 1876. All their storage is in the basement. Their loading dock is not the greatest. So they're going to have the ability, working with us, to sort of rethink how this works. And going and look at some of these other ones, we, we get some ideas on how that flow can work. So, we're excited about it, and hope you are as well.
You know, the, one of the problems with the old North Market is the parking. I mean, sometimes you circle the place, and the parking lot's full, and if you're something with Convention Center, you can't get into it. So it's got to hurt your vendors.
It's, it's, it's tough being popular.
Yeah.
It is. Honestly, the problem is only really on the weekends and during giant conventions.
Yeah.
But obviously, downtown Columbus has become a visitor, visitor. But, yeah, it's usually the number-one complaint of folks coming is that.
Yeah. I mean, you try to stop down to eat lunch, if you're down in that area, and you want to eat lunch there, and there's a lot of interesting.
Good problem, but a problem.
Yeah, and you just can't get in to eat lunch.
That's for sure.
Which I think these Crawford Hoying guys have pretty much solved their parking garage. They've done a really good job.
Coming up and park.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Could I, you mentioned earlier, I, I don't know who mentioned it, that it was sort of a turnaround situation. So there's some recipe that some things weren't working, and you made some changes, and now they're working. So if you could share a little bit about that?
The, the North Market?
Yeah. And a little bit about what volume you need to make it viable. You mentioned a little over $1 million. You know, you're located, there's a lot of convention traffic, et cetera, so forth. So could you share a little bit about what you think the secrets are there and the economics of that?
So, 1876 to the late 80s, it was city-owned, city-run. And I'll give you a little more history, you probably want, but it'll help you, some context around it. So the, the original building, it's always been on the same footprint. The original building burned down in 1948. It was in the parking lot. The city was not. There was originally four public markets, by the way, in, in Columbus. There was Central Market, which is where the Greyhound station is now. Sadly, that's, they figured that was a better idea. There was a West Market, which is, it was in Franklinton. And then there was an East Market on Mount Vernon, that burned down also right around the same time the first North Market did. And then, when the market burned down in '48, the city, I even have the dispatch headline, "City not going to rebuild." Because already markets, people were moving to suburbs, and the, this provisioning thing was, you also have to realize, the North Market, you said this would be the real North, that was the north side of Columbus in 1876. That was, that was, that was way north. So then the Quanza Hut, they, they bought the Quanza Hut, the merchants paid for that. City still ran it. And then that was about to fall down, burn down. And then the city obtained, they owned half the lot, we got the other half of the lot. And then they put us, this old warehouse that we're in now, two old warehouses, they built Farm Machine Ray. So that happened in '95, it's right around the Convention Center, and I, I wasn't here at that time. The Convention Center was about to come, this is pre-Arena District. That neighborhood was still pretty rough and tumble, boarded up. Moving into those buildings, it was a $5 million capital campaign, and the city helped out as well. It was, it was a bit of a crapshoot. So really, the first, '95 to 2005, there was still a lot of growth happening down there, highly subsidized by the city. And then things started turning around in '05, Arena District, a lot of other things, Park Street, just the, the short north, obviously, was, was gaining momentum. Downtown was coming back. What I believe, and I came along in 2013, that there, and with a great board, we readdressed the rent structures. You, you basically, at the time, when I showed up, you paid rent based on how long you'd been there. So, you know, I'd been there from the, some, and we have a fair amount of folks who came from the Quanza Hut. Oh, I've been there 20 years, I paid 20 years ago rent. My new merchant here next to me just came in, they paid today's rent. We, and that's when we came up with an overall rent strategy that was still fair. And, and obviously, we have a mission, and, and, you know, when we can't afford things, we just can't go to the merchant's aid, raise the rent. 50% of our revenue now, when I started, 50% of the revenue was rent. 40% was parking revenue, that parking lot in front you speak of, and 10% was fundraising. And I came from the corporate world, and I said, well, you're a nonprofit, and 10% of your revenue is, is fundraising, shouldn't that be more? So now we're around 50, 30% fundraising, and the rest in parking revenue in front. So, more fundraising, we got our rents in line, we got our expenses in line. It really was just an overall retool of how the market and the organization did business, top-down. So that was one question. The second one was, oh, so we get about a million and a half to 2 million a year. Visitors to the market. The market as a whole does about 16 million, the merchants do, does about 16 million total, which has gone up every year over the last five years. Yet, people are very important to markets. You know, density. So, was the question, is, does this seem to make sense? No, and, and I do. I think the key here is, is why, you know, we, we continue these, these chats, a lot of these other folks that come, they don't have, you know, they want to revitalize a neighborhood, which I think is great. And, and markets can help redo that. That's part of the, the beauty of public markets. But at some point, you have to start with people. And I think the community, the size of Dublin and its surrounding areas, and this particular development itself can do it. I mean, we don't need, on the numbers we're doing, on the performance we're working on, we don't need a million and a half people a year to come through, which maybe someday they will. They won't right away. But we're certainly preparing for the right numbers and the right amount of merchants to, for everybody to be able to survive.
So what do you think those numbers are? What are you guys guessing you get in visitors or revenues or what?
Visitors or revenues?
Both.
Revenues are about 500, 600,000 is what's in our budget. Visitors, I haven't really even thought about that number, to be quite frank with you. It's, it's something much less than a million, simply because Rick has a massive Convention Center that's going to expand it across the street from him, so.
Probably 30% of the numbers that I use are convention and tourism. I mean, I do feel, from what I've seen from coming up here, and since we, February is the first time I've been up here, as I mentioned, and I've come up often at different times of the year, different times of the day, different times of the week. And I do believe, you know, it was interesting seeing the, the stats on who's coming to their Farmer's Market, 20 minutes. Well, I'm downtown, I'm 20 minutes away. So clearly, people are traveling from other parts of central Ohio, and I do believe, you know, you do get a fair amount of tourism. And you have that, there's a lot of animals just north of here, and a lot of people driving by. And that, you know, we, I'm always, we usually, in the top, top five things to visit in central Ohio, the zoo is usually number one. You're going to get those folks too. So tourism is, is important, I think, to this, this part of the world, and that's certainly helpful to these sorts of things.
Yeah, you've got a pretty sophisticated and wheel, heel demographic up here.
No question.
That would probably go for, you know, craft meat guys.
Well, and that's seeing, though, also in the survey, how often would you visit? Once a week is very important. That's what keeps the fresh merchants alive.
Right.
I mean, the office crowd, for us, the office crowd and the convention and tourism crowd, they don't buy heads of lettuce. I need those weekly community shoppers, and that's what keeps that alive. And that's a very important part of a public market, if not the most important part, is that. And what you're looking for up here is that fresh food component.
I'll ask one more question, and I know there are people.
Sure.
So you mentioned the current model is sales revenue, parking, fundraising.
Rent, fundraising, and parking revenue, yes.
So, thinking about this, fundraising, parking, I mean, help me think through what, how you're thinking to make this mathematically work.
I see fun, fundraising and rent.
Right. And one other thing we've contemplated here is another, it's another event space, too. This is a space that could hold other events that maybe are not suited for the event center or some other location. We haven't put a large amount of, of revenue in the budget for that. I think we start in year one at 10%, maybe run it up to 20%. But in a budget of $600,000, it's not a lot of money per month. I think it can be a cool place to have an event. Fundraising, something we'll certainly have to contemplate. Obviously, our bond structure and what we're proposing would provide the revenues, the sales tax revenues to help offset if there's, if there's a shortfall. But revenue, at least rent revenue, is a large, is probably more than 50% of the current, current model. I, I didn't bring it with me. I'd have to, have to look and follow up with you on that. But fundraising can fill the gap along with those other tools that we have in the, in the, in the financing structure.
So I fibbed one more question.
Sure.
So, who, who fundraises? Who are the, the donors in this type of a?
We're, for us, right at the moment? A fair amount is, is corporate donors, institutional donors, as they call them in the biz. That, for us, that's a big one. More so than, the fundraising component for us is made up of a couple things. One is the institutional donors, usually donating to, our, our big fundraiser year is the gala, and that is in May of every year. The, the, the big bucks are usually a Huntington or something sponsoring our gala. With that, though, the 600 people attending those tickets, that's part of the fundraising effort, is ticket sales. We also do two other major fundraisers, one being the Ohio Wine Fest. It's the largest Ohio wine fest now in, in the state of Ohio, and that's 20-some grape growers. And that is a ticket-per-ticket fundraiser. And then we do an Ohio Spirits event, which that's, there's 25 Ohio spirit makers now. We all probably know OYO or Watershed, but there's 25 of those. We have the first of that's kind, that kind. These are all events, I think, also that would be very relevant up here as well. And, and, and events that we could transfer and do both places and also create new ones as well. But so, it's ticket sales and institutional donors make up the majority of that fundraising. And rentals.
Do you think, and have you figured in like, oh, Cardinals, some of these places with bicycles and the scooters and all that, coming over to your place for lunch and being part of that or?
Yes, most definitely. I, besides the city of Columbus, you have, I believe, this is a fun fact I found somewhere. I believe Dublin has more ci, workers, daytime workers than anyone else, other than Colo, the city of Columbus. And that's very important. So no question, I believe that that is a, for a certain period of time, and hopefully around quitting time, that's, that's an important part of the business model, no doubt. And I do believe they will come.
Questions down here. Chris?
I, I think a market like this in Dublin would really be fantastic. I think this is the kind of community that would embrace something like this, for sure. I have some concerns as well. Most notably, you know, where we seem to be building some momentum to get people to travel to the east side of the river. And we have not built nearly as much momentum to bring people to the west side of the river in terms of just a kind of a casual commute. Our west side of the river tends to be more destinations than they are experiential kind of things. So I'm not certain that this might be the best place for a market in the community. I think there might be some other opportunities. I think that this council should explore that and think that through and make sure that if we are going to be partnering in a market like this, to make sure that we put it in, in just the right space. I do have a lot of concerns with the nonprofit status of this and the, the subsidy by, by description for the vendors to be there. And I understand that it has to be subsidized because it'll never pay for itself. But we do have quite a few folks in our community, particularly in historic Dublin, that are making chocolates and candles and ice cream. And many of the things I would imagine would be represented here. I, I want to make sure that we think through well the unintended consequences to the other, to the, to the balance of the people trying to do business within the city of Dublin and the mom and pop kind of places. We've got a number of ice cream shops and, you know, candy make confectionery and things like that. So I, I would really want to explore more about what the auxiliary impact is of a market like this on other retail in the area and how they compete with one another and, and who is winning and who's losing. I just want to make sure that we consider the whole picture very well. You know, I do have a, a bit of concern. There was certainly great cost in constructing the parking spaces in which this market will, will occupy. And it arguably would, for a nonprofit, would be some of our most expensive real estate in the city to construct.
We're on some of the most expensive real estate in the city of Columbus still.
To construct. I'm talking about the expense of per parking spot of what we, what was in recently, the expense that, that this would now occupy. I, you know, we don't have parking revenues to offset. You had, I think you said 30% of your revenue generated is from the paid parking.
About 20.
20, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Certainly, that would be a consideration for us. And, and then lastly, my concern would be in reprioritizing the, the debt structure, just in terms of, it's not, not your business, that's ours. Of, you know, thinking through, you know, okay, well, if, if we wouldn't get, if we wouldn't be, why, why are we in seventh place if we don't expect to ever realize anything? Why would we stand in a line that is, is not ever going to move? And those are questions for us, policy questions for us to answer. So there, there's a number of things. I really, I think the idea is fantastic. I think the community would welcome it. I, I think we need to make sure that we don't hurt anybody in, in, in an attempt to try to do good. And, and then we have to think through the taxpayer dollars that we are representing and, and make sure that we're judicious in what we do with those. But it really, it's a really attractive idea. It's, it is exciting. There's no question about that.
Thank you, Chris. Christina?
I won't belabor some of the same comments that have been made. I think it is a really exciting option and I really look forward to trying to work it through to a place where we can come together. I definitely would like to see the pro forma. I think that would certainly help me as well. So I, I look forward to seeing that. I agree, I don't want there to be collateral damage across the river for what's being offered here. And I think there's ways that we could figure that out, whether it's offering some space to some of our businesses that are on the west side of the river at, at lower or no cost to them in a, in a particular area. I don't know what that would look like. I just think that's something we should definitely think through. I, I would also like to see, as you think about your design and loading docks and where you put your waste and that kind of thing, some consideration for some sustainability in terms of like food scrap recycling, even materials recycling.
Very important to us.
Yeah, I think that's really critical.
Currently, we have, we just banned styrofoam.
That's great.
First of the year. So I, I care very much about those things at the market and when we're moving, doing that as quickly as we possibly can.
That's, and that's fantastic. I think those are definitely things that need to be thought about. They're very often left out of.
I agree, yes.
Both zoning code and just general design when, when you design the built environment. So I think for me, those are some of the most important issues. But I, I, I don't know that any of them are insurmountable. I just want to be really thoughtful about thinking them through. The pro forma will help in thinking through some of the concepts that are in the memo that we received in terms of, you know, what pieces are fully funded of the city's debt, what pieces are not. There's a lot in here. Spending a little bit of time unpacking it would be really helpful for me as well. I think that's something that we, as a group, need to do. That's, again, that's not yours, that's really ours. But for me, that would be really important to, to have a full understanding. But, but the pro forma will help to inform that, I think, as well. I think it's a super fantastic idea. I'm pretty excited to see where we can go with this.
Okay. Is that all you guys have?
That's all I have.
Sure.
Thanks. I can't sit in one place without talking for that long, so I have to say something. I just wanted to bring, bring a couple of things to, to your attention. I, I appreciate the comment about the east side and the west side. I've lived in Dublin for, I think, only two, fewer years than, than you have and have seen the, the types of things you're talking about. And really, it's, it's many more years than we've been alive that there's been this idea of this river being a dividing line. And I don't think that's valid anymore. And that's really one of the great ideas of this project, is to help give more of a reason to, to be on the east side, which hasn't existed ever, since 1800s. Just, I wanted to point out the fact that it's great to talk about ideas and things that can happen, but we have something here that's actionable, that we are paying for and taxing ourselves to pay for. And as we talk to these tenants that'll bring a million dollars of payroll taxes to the year, to, to, or, a year, to Dublin, it's very real for them to understand that we have options like a farmer's market that are actionable and not pie in the sky and may happen or may not happen. And let's worry about how we're going to impact this person or the other person. What matters is getting things delivered, especially now at a time when we're in economic uncertainty. We've, we've crafted an actual plan with the most credible people in the city and in the region. We want to deliver it. We hope and expect city council to get behind us. Thank you.
You know, I gotta say.
Could you? Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I just got to say this. It's interesting, I was talking to one of our oldest restaurant people. He was one of, probably our biggest complainer over wanting free parking and other things and really never had to pay for any. And I said, so what do you think about the Bridge Street corridor and the bridge going over? As you know, we got a $23 million bridge going over that's both pedestrian and trap, that's pedestrian and bicycle. So, and, you know, I, it was interesting just to hear his remarks because he said, you know, this is the most fantastic thing that could happen to my restaurant. Okay, so all of a sudden, across the bridge, we're getting five, six, seven new restaurants. You think he'd be under stress? No. He's smart enough to know that's how synergy really works and why you go to certain areas. And I think the bridge, is just what you said, unites the town. And I think it probably increases everybody's business because if you think about how you might move around at night, you might think, okay, I'm going out for dinner, I'm going to go to the short north. I'm going to go over to Grandview because there's a whole choice of restaurants there and places to go and things to do. And this is, again, one of these things, there's some people that just go to Costco to, to walk around, push their cart around. Some people go to Whole Foods and walk around. To have a place like a library or a market, to go meander around, buy some things, is really sort of a neat experience and it totally fits in with our walkable neighborhood concept. So this is really probably a good thing. I don't think it's going to negatively impact anybody that we exist, that already exist in business in our city. I think it's going to be, if you can pull it off in the funding, same thing Chris said, I'm sort of worried about the funding. I hope you guys can pull it off. But I think it's really going to be a wonderful thing. We're going to have a su, a super synergy in the center of this town where this is going to be a great and cool place to live. And I think a lot of people are coming to that realization. So kudos and I hope you guys are successful.
You know, John, this makes the vision we talked about back in the day. And, and we know, I know from my experience in the restaurant business, that co-location is something that they strive for because that becomes a destination area. And I think it will serve both the east and west side and that, that's an important factor, so.
No doubt about it.
Kathy, did you have something else?
As you were leaving, you said, in this period of economic uncertainty. You have to tell me what you meant by that.
What I mean is that we're at the, in the midst of the longest economic expansion in the history of the United States since the Great Depression. What that means is that it, that it's questionable as to how much longer it will run. We're already on borrowed time. We're seeing interest rates go up. We're seeing cap rates go up. We're seeing construction costs increase faster than you can blink an eye. We've had a project we're working on down on Lane Avenue right now was, was $38 million to build a project in 2012. The exact same project is costing us $68 million to build in 2018. So construction costs continue to go up. Rents are going up, but not nearly as fast as construction costs. Interest rates are rising. There's, there's a lot of uncertainty in the market right now as to what, what is going to happen in the next two or three years. We have a lot of great momentum at Bridge Park and we want to get to the finish line with the critical mass of things and pieces and parts that are going to make our community great before things change. And we would love nothing more than for this to continue on for the next 10 years with no interruptions and be able to continue to build in other communities and this community without any issues. But that's what I mean, is that we're, we're all in borrowed time. We're all looking over our shoulders right now and we're, it's, we feel almost as if it's, it's a, a race at this point to be able to deliver on this great project for Dublin while we still can.
I think all of us can see you're sort of at a crook's in your development and sort of in the middle of it. And you're right, you're going to need to finish this thing out and you're going to need a couple more years. And then you'll have a great, successful development. So I think all of us are looking at you and thinking that already, so, or wishing you well.
Okay. Dana, how do you want us to proceed? There've been a number of comments and concerns addressed. I know that there needs to be a slight modification of the, the development agreement to allow for this kind of a facility for us to, we're certainly not voting on this tonight, right? This is something that we're going to be considering in the future.
Yeah, we are, we, we would be coming back anyway with some changes to the development agreement, some cleanup, I'll call them for lack of a better word, of things that have been previously approved and we need to make some slight modifications too. I think the memo in, in the packet the council put together certainly suggests our, our position as staff, my position in support of the project, the concept. I think as staff has looked at this, we do think another community amenity such, such as this would be helpful to have there. I, I understand the west, the west side issues as well. I think that there's certainly things we need to continue to think about to do over there as well. If this should happen on the east side, we've never given up on that. We'll continue to work on those things. I think the downtown alliance is one of those things that's working to bring the east and the west side of the river together in a way that's working together. And I think that's something that we need to continue to, to work on. So I really appreciate that point as well. I, I hadn't really thought a whole lot about the cannibalism effect and I appreciate that that got brought up. I do think that's something we ought to really think about. I don't know how we might address that, but it's something we probably could respond to as part of this and, and talk about that if you should want us to come back. I think what we were really looking for was, does this generally meet enough of a, a threshold that we could have a reasonable opportunity to, to see, see council be in favor of this? We certainly don't want anyone to spend, we want them to spend the time they feel appropriate to try to make the case for this. And we want to work, we'll certainly work with them, whatever that takes, to try to get answers back as needed and if they're willing to stay in it with us and, and come back with that appropriate information that you need. So that's really the juncture we're at, I, I guess. I don't want to speak for them, but, so, I, I guess we were asking probably more specifically about, is it, is it worthwhile for them and us to continue to work together to come back? Is this a, an absolutely insurmountable type of request or is it within the realm of possibility? That's probably a really vague question to ask, but I, I don't, I don't want to spin wheels either. I'm sure they don't. I certainly don't want to kill this opportunity tonight either. I'm not asking to do that if there's a chance that we might be able to figure something out, so.
So what's the best way for us to proceed?
Well, I, I think if you're. I think if you're, you know, generally enthusiastic or favorable, if you will, about a market on that side and, and this sort of thing, I think it's something that, that would be helpful for us to understand if that's, you know, willingness of council to strongly consider. If you feel it's such a, now I'm pulling stuff out of the air here, but if, don't mean to pick on this one, but if you're, if you're really concerned it's going to somehow kill off the, the west side, and I know that's not what you mean, but I mean, then maybe it's insurmountable. But I, I, I guess I'm trying to decide, is this something that, for, for the majority of you, hopefully all of you, that you feel we can try to advance down the road?
So you want sort of a gut reaction, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah, I, I think it's only fair to, to, to these folks. I, like I said, I don't want to risk killing anything off. I, I just want to get a sense of the ability to try to see if, if we can come back with, and, and try to address the major concerns that you might have.
Dana, I'm certainly very supportive of doing our due diligence and looking at this. And I, I think that we need to probably engage a few stakeholders in historic Dublin and we need to gauge the balance of our community's interests. And I, I don't want it to take forever. I'm not saying that this should take three months. It should take three days, you know, to just make sure that we have the conversation and that, and that we're willing to talk honestly about if we, if this community were going to have this, where would it be? And is this the right spot? And maybe those answers are yes. I just think that we need to vet that with the people that are already here. And, you know, and make sure that they know that they're our first priority to somebody that we certainly would be excited to have come as well.
Okay, so let's just see. So the issue basically is, are we generally supportive, given the concerns that have been addressed being, or the concerns that have been expressed being addressed and some of these other issues being.
Correct. If you think it's a fair question to ask at this juncture, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and I have a question. Can I have, I'm going to ask a financing question just as we're going down that path a little bit, so I understand. And being a newbie on council, I, I sent just a fair little list of questions to you.
As long as I get to call my cavalry up if I need it.
Thank you, no. The, the sales tax, is the administration of that, the amount of it, the half percent, the timing of all of that? This has all been previously decided and defined under the agreement. So that is a question.
Right.
The amount, the timing, the duration, the application.
Right. I'll take a stab at that in order if Greg or Terry want to come up and back me up in case I go down the wrong road. The, the sales tax was, tax was one of those tools that was provided in the development agreement that was given to the, really to the developer to apply against the, the folks there for the, for the purpose of, it's one more of those economic development tools that they could apply for, I want to say, things like this or other needs. And so it was set up for them to be able to, to apply it. It is collected by, they would hire an administrator to collect it. They would pay for an administrator to collect it and it would be, I recall, administered by the NCA through the new community authority. Wow, no one got up.
How about the amount? Is the amount determined by what? The half a percent?
That one, I, it's a pre-designated amount, but I don't know if it's incrementalized or if it's all at one point. Greg, you want to try to address that or whoever get to the mic first?
Sure thing. The maximum amount is a half percent. The actual amount that would be levied is determined by the new community authority board based on the needs of the project. It can be anything up to a half percent.
So could another project come forward and more sales tax be let, or is this one and done for the?
This is it for this project and it's just.
What do you mean, this project? All of Bridge Park?
For Bridge Park. Yeah, and that's set by something called the petition that this council approved when the project was started. In order to go beyond that level, they'd have to come back to this council to approve an increase in that half percent.
And what is the duration allowed on that sales tax? Is this a permanent change or a time change or how does that work?
It's determined by the board based on need. So it can go on indefinitely if need be. Again, it's, it's just for the Bridge Park project, but that's up to the board. If there is a funding need with that revenue, they can have that every year going forward.
And, and if I understand this, that this project is not, as I understand it, the, the build out of this is not, is not viable without this sales tax. Is that a correct? I mean, our, because as I understood the memo, we don't need it immediately, but we do. And I'm just looking for some clarity and understanding on.
I think the developer has determined this is the only funding mechanism that they have identified that can fill this gap. I think the rationale would be, this market would be added to the list of community facilities in the development agreement so that you would include garages, an event center, all the streets and a public market then would be added as one of those community facilities.
And I'm just asking quick. So if. And I'm just asking quick. So, if the authority then looks at the pro formas or whatever financial statements are presented and says, you don't need that, you need a smaller amount, you need a bigger amount, or whatever, it is the authority, not the council's, decision about what would get levied, when it would get levied, and how it'll get levied. So, it's not really within our purview?
The council, the council appoints the board.
Well, I understand, but I mean, the board will just
Several years ago.
Yeah, so I'm asking the I'm just trying to understand, Mike, sort of how the whole thing works. So, that decision wouldn't come before us. That would be determined by the board that's in place now. That's what I'm I'm asking.
Correct. The decision before council would be, should this market be added as a community facility, that the NCA board could then fund with this charge. And then they would determine the amount of charge year over year within that half percent cap that's been set by council.
So, they would look at it annually to see if it still is required?
They would look at it annually, yes.
Thank you.
And one thing, I think, to be clear, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that none of this debt would be city-issued debt. This would all be debt that the developers responsible for securing through the various mechanisms that it's used before.
That's correct. So, except for the first two garages, the debt for the project has been issued by the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority. I believe that's the developers' plan for this as well. That's what the development agreement calls for. So, it would not be city-issued debt.
And so, Dana, you mentioned that you were going to bring back some other things as it relates to the agreement. Do any of those relate to this particular project?
Not to the not not to the market, no. To Bridge Park, yes, because it's part of the original development agreement.
And so, when you bring those back, are they going to be brought back as sort of individual items or one package?
We had thought about bringing it back as one package, but then you could you could decide on those individually. I mean, we could set the legislation up that way.
Thank you.
I think, in effect, the clarity we're requesting now, we have not yet drafted that piece of amended language for the development agreement amendments that you will consider. All the others, which, as Dana's characterized, are fairly minor, have been drafted. So, I think by getting a positive affirmation tonight generally, we would draft language for your consideration. That would really be the action at which you would make a decision to say, this is an appropriate thing to enable within the development agreement. But we'd like to know that there's generally a positive sense for this so that we can draft that language for your formal consideration.
And the only language that relates to the market is frankly, the place in line, right? Because the sales agreement would not be in that language. And then whatever else you're bringing would not be in that language. So, what we're really talking about, again, question, is giving up the residual place in line for potential profits off of this. That is the only financial?
Off of this particular block, which in all of our financial analysis, we've never projected receiving any financial flow from this block on there. And most of that new flow is actually coming from the surcharge of the sales tax revenue, which they probably wouldn't enact right now but for this project.
So, it's only it's only for clarification, it's only giving up place in line for Block D? And there won't be other financial things in this agreement that's coming forward here related to this market or this block or this decision?
I think the all the amendments that are being contemplated right now would include everything that's needed. It's cleaning up anything in A, B, C, and D. I don't know if it's contemplating any other additional blocks at this point. Anything else that would affect future blocks would have to come back before you for consideration. Or if the project, as they showed, grew to the blocks that used to be the Wendy site on the other side of the street or some other location, all that has to come back before you for review and approval.
So, I guess, Terry, what I'm asking is there are there financial ramifications of that cleanup? Are there dollars and cents associated with that, or are all we talking about really?
We don't believe that there are.
Pardon me?
We do not believe that there are any financial implications.
No, I agree with them. It's allowing there were some higher costs associated with the community facilities and public improvements that we need to account for in the CFCA, which is the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, and the NCA debt that they can issue to increase from the $61 million to cover that. They'll also be proposing to allow a cost of issuance to increase from 2% to 3.5%. And there were some modifications to the roadway plan that was expressly mentioned in the development agreement. You've approved those, council has approved those changes, those modifications. We just got to come back and clean up the document.
So, what is the
But it's not a financial implication on the city.
So, what is the trigger that makes us get out of line?
In terms of what?
In the waterfall of repayment.
So, in terms of what we're talking about tonight for the market, the way the agreement works is if there's excess, and what we have always certainly hoped someday there would be some excess, as Terry mentioned, we've never planned on it for this particular block. So, it would use that excess to fund this particular community new community facility, the market, rather than some other community facility in and around the Bridge Park area.
Or flow back to the city.
Or flow back to the city to pay for improvements in and around the area as well. The money has to stay in the area per state law, but there's some choice by council that can be made in terms of where in the area that money flows to.
Sure, there's certainly a lot of worthy projects that we could imagine funding. But this would eliminate any designation of council of funding a project, and it would direct all of these funds to solely fund this project.
From a practical standpoint, from this block, again, from this block, it would direct it to fund the market. There's other blocks where certainly, while we have not planned for them, there could be excess revenues that would not be dedicated to the market and could be used for other, again, improvements in the area that benefit the area. That's a state law requirement, but would not be designated for this market that would still be open for designation.
And if you recall, for blocks B and C, where the city did issue the debt for the garages and the streets, not only is there a minimum service payment that covers those costs, all the upside in the future flows to the city. So, as property values increase, valuations go up, everything above that minimum service payment, those all flow to the city. That's probably the city's biggest opportunity for waterfall improvements, although they exist in other blocks as well.
And I know it sounds confusing when we say, well, we're in the waterfall, but we never really counted on it. And I think really, at the end of the day, it's a true statement. We never really counted on it. All of our scenarios, all of our planning, everything we've set aside, everything we've designated was intended to be backed by all these other tools. This tool was one that could add more revenue, but I think without something like this as a motivation, you probably wouldn't see Crawford-Hawing apply it, i.e. a sales tax, so that we might even be able to participate in that. So, you know, if not but if not for this, that probably wouldn't happen. So, I think that's I know it's kind of counterintuitive that we would say that, but
So, is the rationale for if we're not going to see it and it's not going to be created, the rationale for taking us out of line is what?
That's why I came up. So, that's good timing. The rationale is, you know, you're asking questions. I think a lot of council members brought up the idea of what happens if the funding is not there for this, or, you know, just concern about the long-term viability of the market, right? So, one way to help backstop that is to allow for more dollars to flow back back into the market if in fact there are any. So, whether it be for operational ongoing operational savings, to be able to put aside a reserve, to handle a down year, you know, I think that that was an idea behind doing this and being able to take care of those dollars and route them that way. I can tell you right now, if this Councilman Grooms, Councilman Grooms, Councilman Grooms, Councilman Grooms, I'm just I'm answering your question. So, I think that the if this became an issue, if
I got my answers. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if this became an issue where the, you know, taking the city out of the waterfall became a major issue, this these are dollars we don't necessarily count on anyway. So, this may be something that may not even really be worth debating. It's my understanding that under the framework of the development agreement, really, all we are looking to do is add this as a as a community facility. So, being able to exercise raising taxes as a means of moving towards, you know, creating this community facility that, as we know, people do want. I can tell you the farmer's market that we've had now, we have had participation from folks on the west side. We think the west side vendors, I know some of them personally, we'd want to reach out to them and try to include them in the market. I think that makes a lot of sense. The bottom line is that Rick Harrison-Wolff, who's here, is a curator of great tenants, and I think having an opportunity for great tenants that exist in historic Dublin over there makes a lot of sense.
Nelson, we've moved past that. So, where do we go now, Dana? What do you suggest that we do?
Well, I guess I've not heard anyone say, don't come back. So,
No. Is there a way that we can pursue this amendment that you say that we need to consider, but also address some of the other concerns? Can we, without getting too far out over our skis, as you say sometimes, if we endorse this concept, but still try to get some answers to some of the questions that were that maybe even between now and the next meeting?
Yeah, I would recommend we at least come back the next meeting with some of these I've got notes on some of these questions. We'll go vet those out, and we'll come back with those. I guess I'm looking to Crawford-Hawing to see if you'll stay in it with us to do that for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the important part is understanding what Councilman Grooms said about this taking three days and not three months. We are moving forward with construction of the D garage right now, and the best, most cost-effective time to install the things that will be needed for the market is while we're building it, not after it's built. So, I think that we're willing to hang in there with you guys, but we need to understand that this isn't going to become a protracted process to try to that will draw this out, you know, asking questions about, is this the right place? Is this the right place? When we've already put in the time and the money to have to hope be host to, sorry, a farmer's market for this summer. We've shown that it can be successful. We want your commitment that this process will move along quickly. Are there any other comments?
No, I think I think between Dana and yourself, and you remember the original development agreement very clearly.
Very clearly. It was there.
No, I think really, everybody here remembers it. I think the newer members don't really understand it because we spent hundreds of hours going through minutia of details on this to make sure that every dot was in its right place and every T was crossed correctly so that the city wouldn't become liable over the taxpayers. And the waterfall issue was beat around till it was dead. We have new members here, four of them, that probably didn't really don't have a lot of experience, and they're asking a lot of questions about this. And but I'd like to say that I think it's really an exciting concept. I'm sort of honored that the north market with its reputation would end up in Dublin possibly. I think it's a great thing. And I think the synergy thing is really important. I don't think we're really going to hurt people on the other I'm trying to think of the businesses that would be hurt on the other side of the river, and I don't really think it's going to happen. I think it's going to draw a lot of people down here for everybody. So, I don't see that as a big problem. So.
These are really good, really good questions. Let us come back with in response to those, and we'll do that at your next meeting, see if we can spin that around that quick.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. All right. Thanks.
Thanks. I just have one comment to make, if that's okay.
Sure.
I'll try to be brief. So, obviously, your passion, Nelson, is very evident and very clear, and I really appreciate that. However, I would say that to come in front of a council and tell us that there's a potential, whatever it is, waterfall, seventh place, is a silly thing or not a thing we should be discussing, really is not for you to make that call. We were elected to have those discussions and to really thoroughly vet through things for our residents and for our citizens. So, that gets to be our job. And I would just ask that if you come up here and present your passion, please do. I think it's great, but maybe be respectful of the job that we need to I don't need any more comments. Please.
Nelson, please, please, please. No, no, no.
She misunderstood what I said. That was silly, and our part, not on your part. You have every right to discuss important issues like that. I wasn't trying to remove that as being part of your job.
No, but you're up here demanding that we push things along as well.
I'm saying we should have brought this to you if we would have understood that there would be this much debate about this issue, which, as we all have talked about at great length, may not ever come to pass. That's the I'm not trying to take the job away from you. I'm making sure you understand.
But you've also asked us to commit to pushing things forward in a quick and timely manner. I think that that's always our intent, but we're also not going to sweep things under the carpet just to make things move fast. And I mean, it is our job to do this in a very thoughtful and very thorough manner. And I would just ask that you consider that as you address us. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate it. I think that the thing to take away at the end of the day, when getting back to the issue of a market, there's generally pretty much unanimous support for the concept. So, we just have to work through the issues and get some questions answered. And that's what we're here to do. So, you got what you need, General?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Adopting the CSAC recommendations for a sustainability framework. Is Marilyn Baker here? Oh, there she is. Come on up, Marilyn. I didn't see you back there.
I thought they were going to be saying something.
Well, they might. You can at least sit in the front row then when we get kicked off. Nick, you going to kick us off here?
Actually, we'll hear from Marilyn first. I know she's been waiting to speak, so we'll go ahead and let her speak.
You are. You are up.
Hi, I am up. I'll only take a minute. Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, I'm Marilyn Baker and back here again on behalf of the Dublin Community Services Advisory Commission. The commission heard from Dublin staff and a variety of outside speakers regarding the Dublin Sustainability Framework, and this happened probably about every meeting, if not every meeting over the past year, actually, a month over. We also heard about the efforts of the Echo Dublin, which is Dublin's green team. So, every effort was made in capturing Dublin's story that focuses on sustainability. The staff did a wonderful job with that. And also about what's been done over the years, as well as what the city intends to continue in using the framework that sets the measurable objectives and strategies in order to meet the sustainability goals. The staff asked that the commission asked the commission for input on the framework at each and every meeting as it was being developed, and also for support of the concepts which were included in the plan. We had lengthy discussions at each meeting on each section that was presented to us. There were numerous questions raised and by the commission members, and there were comments and recommendations posed. The recommendations that were posed were individual members that made suggestions for inclusion. These discussions covered the subject matter, format, as well as suggested inclusions. And we learned a great deal about what the staff is doing day by day regarding sustainability. And the framework, clearly, we feel reflects how the staff will proceed in building a culture around sustainability and how the city's efforts in the community will build off of that. The committee members have voiced confidence at each meeting, as well as the most recent meeting we had, which gave a summary of the final draft. We voiced confidence that the document will continue to guide Dublin in strong efforts towards environmental sustainability and the same within the community. This initiative has been a great opportunity for Dublin to broaden its leadership role in sustainability within central Ohio, as well as going beyond these planning boundaries. So, the commission welcomes our continued involvement and reviews, which they said we would have, and we truly look forward to hearing more about the ongoing initiatives and the outcomes.
Thank you very much, Marilyn, for all that you do for us and for the commission.
Thank you.
Bellas, what else you got?
All right. Good evening, members of council, and thank you so much for allowing us to present before you tonight. As you heard from commission member Marilyn Baker, we've been working for right around a year with the Community Services Advisory Commission and creating a sustainability framework for the city of Dublin. To just give you an idea of the process and tee us up for how we got here, in April of 2017, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission released the 2017 to 2020 Regional Sustainability Agenda. This served as a guiding document for MORPSI's sustainability-focused programming and committees, and provides the framework for members and regional partners to work towards common goals. In August of 2017, the topic of sustainability was introduced first to the Community Services Advisory Commission. Soon thereafter, MORPSI launched their Sustainable 2050 program. And as some of you may recall, we presented to Dublin City Council Resolution 77-17, which was a commitment to that Sustainable 2050 program, at which time council voted to adopt. In April of this year, we presented our first initial draft of the Sustainability Framework to the commission, at which point they gave extensive feedback Framework to the commission, at which point they gave extensive feedback, recommendations, and inclusions, which we worked to incorporate over the next couple of months. And then in August of this year, we presented our final draft of the Sustainability Framework to the commission.
Thanks, Nick, and good evening, members of council. Sustainable, MORPSI launched Sustainable 2050 to support local government members as they work to improve sustainability throughout central Ohio. The Sustainable 2050 program is an effort to tie into MORPSI's Regional Sustainability Agenda that Nick just mentioned, and to replace the former Central Ohio Green Pact. Communities participating in Sustainable 2050 have an opportunity to become certified as a member community, whether it be bronze, silver, gold, or platinum. Keep in mind that each tier recognizes a community's level of commitment to sustainability and environmental stewardship. In order to complete the certification process, city staff submitted an extensive application to MORPSI, and I'm pleased to share with all you tonight that the city of Dublin is tentatively a platinum-tiered city. As further validation, MORPSI will recognize our achievement at the upcoming Summit on Sustainability next month, and we will be featured in a panel discussion to share our story with the rest of the region. So you may wonder, what does that look like? What is a platinum-tier community? On the screen is a graphic borrowed from the Dublin Sustainability Framework on page eight, and it speaks to the breadth of projects and initiatives undertaken by the city to further our longstanding commitment to sustainability and to an exceptional quality of life to the benefit of our residents and businesses.
The principal structure of the framework is made up of the eight strategic focus areas that you see on the screen before you. These were largely informed by MORPSI's Regional Sustainability Agenda, and through the collaboration with the Community Services Advisory Commission, we were able to develop a comprehensive outline of the goals and objectives that exist within this plan. In addition to requesting council's acceptance of the Dublin Sustainability Framework, we are also requesting further authorization or direction regarding the creation of an external advisory team. You may recognize this as goal number three within the community engagement section of the framework. The purpose of this team would be to receive input and feedback on ongoing basis to update the Dublin Sustainability Framework. The plan would be to have this group meet on a quarterly basis, and members would serve a two-year term, starting in the start of 2019, the idea here being that it would complete at the finish of this Sustainability Framework. And on the screen before you, you can see just some suggested potential community partners that could participate in this, in this external advisory team. And so tonight before you, we do have a request for two different motions, one being to accept our Sustainability Framework, and the other to authorize staff to establish the external advisory team. And we'll take any comments or questions at this time.
Any questions from council?
I have a couple of quick ones.
Go.
Is that all right? Talking about the recommendations for residential sustainability, green initiatives, it talked about new builds. What about including some recommendations for retrofitting existing residences, for things like stormwater capture, you know, better insulation, you know, there's a whole host of things you can do.
So, one of the goals and objectives that exists within the framework, I believe it's in the community engagement piece, is to create a sustainability webpage for the city. There's not really currently one specific landing page that is there for both residents and businesses alike. So that's something we've been working on. We're looking to have it completed by the end of the year. And that is a section where we're going to look to highlight a lot of what you're talking about. AEP, Columbia Gas, and a lot of regional partners already offer a lot of programs that allow residents to get subsidies from an array of different programs to retrofit their homes to accommodate those types of sustainability.
Yeah, and I think that would be important, too, to remember that there are certain rules in the city of Dublin in terms of how much is showing, how big it can be, things like that. So I think that that'll be really critical to be able, for homeowners who want to do some retrofitting, to be able to get that information. So I really appreciate that. And I think that talking about diverting materials away from the landfill and to recycling is really important, but I think what's even more important is about educating the public, which I'm hopeful the website can do. And I know that SUECO has a lot of education materials as well, because when you have a recycle bin that has too much contamination, the whole thing ends up going to the landfill. And so it sort of distorts your diversion rates overall. So I think that'll be really important as you move the framework forward. So I want to make sure that that gets talked about as well. And we talked a little, there's a little bit about zoning code in the framework as well. And I think that in talking about the built environment, and we mentioned this actually earlier tonight with regard to the market, is including direction on how to include dumpster, recycling dumpster space, in terms of like unloading docks and things, rather than just solid waste dumpsters. When multi-unit areas are built, they often leave that out, and so it makes it really difficult to retrofit and get a recycling dumpster in there. So those would be things I would also consider as you go through. But it was a really well-put-together framework, and I really appreciate it.
Great. And the one thing that I will mention is that, you know, those are a lot of things that came out in our conversations with the commission, even some of the regional partners that we brought in for presentation. We just saw them as within the scope of what we were looking to do with this framework. I think we see that as something that we really need to get some proper resident and community feedback on. And so we see this external advisory team as a way to really start to reach out and take that next step after that 2018 to 2020 timeframe for things like you're talking about. I mean, we've identified those goals. We just see them as that longer-term effort.
Yeah, I agree. I think a website or sort of a one-stop-shop to get that information is really helpful. A lot of people don't know that you can recycle materials or food scraps, and even if they know that you can, they don't know where to go or how to do it. So it's important to be able to include those resources.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I'd just make one quick comment. That PACE program that we saw that we used in Metro, we're working right now at the Air Quality Development Authority with the program. It will include residential as well as commercial. So they can pass those costs of insulation, doors, windows, HVAC, and spread it out over a period of time on their taxes. So this is an area that you might want to explore with that group. We just had a person in from California, and it's been remarkably successful out there on the West Coast, so.
Great. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay. I make a motion we adopt the recommended framework.
I'll second.
Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thanks, Bellas. Staff comments?
Thank you.
Dana?
Yes, just one item. In your info packet for this meeting, I placed a memo regarding the use of council standing committees. As I stated in the memo, my original intent was to propose more use of your standing committees that are established in your council rules of order. These committees you make use of now for specific issues, as have previous councils. And these committees include administrative, finance, community development, public services committees. I'm proposing that staff can and will support a more extensive use of your committee system in 2019, if you agree, in order to give council members more time with department, division directors, and myself to hear about and discuss city services, programs, and certain initiatives underway or proposed. Over time, it could be that more issues, as referenced in your council rules of order, are addressed by these committees to include budgets and legislation. Some cities have and rely more on strong committee systems than others. This is really a reflection of one's culture that is built over time. It's certainly one that's built on trust and the willingness to delegate. It also implies more time, but I think it could result in more efficiencies in the long run. I wanted to pursue this more aggressively when I first became city manager, but felt the timing wasn't right. As I thought about proposing this for 2019, I came to realize it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't try it yet this year by using the operating budget review process as a way to jumpstart it. After all, perhaps the most important things we do, providing services and programs to our public, is based off the operating budget. It would serve as a great opportunity for committee members to spend more quality time with staff reviewing the budget prior to your discussion with council as a whole, as it relates to this year's process. And I won't go any more detail. I've given you enough in your memo, but I request that you consider this, both for the operating review process as well as perhaps to deploy in 2019.
Might be something really good to tag on to the end of our next work session. I think, you know, the bit of discussion that we might have. I think it's a great idea. Execution's everything, but I think in concept, it's a really great idea.
I think it's a good idea as well. When Dana first brought it up to me, and when I'm looking at the makeup of each of these four committees, our chairpeople are Chris, John, Mike, and Christina. So we've spread that across council and the membership of each of the committees. And the chart that Dana included that divides up the sections of the budget that will correspond with each one of those, it's a pretty even division across those four committees. And it really is designed, as I understand it, and I agree with Dana, to bring another layer of review. It's not intended to push things away from the finance committee or what we normally traditionally have done, but to add another layer of review upfront to allow another opportunity, as Dana says, to take a deep dive. I think we saw that with the CIP, where there were a lot, additional questions, a lot of flushing out. We've gone onto a lot greater detail than we had. And I think with the budget, we have a little bit of a backside time constraint that we've got to get taken care of. So I think it's a good idea. I think it adds another layer of due process, and I am fully supportive of doing this. I completely trust all of my council members, and if there's something the administrative committee, I mean, let's face it, 96% of the budget isn't going to have any issues related to it. It's going to be those 4% of the issues that are brought up, and if the committees can flush out those 4% so that when we get to finance, we're really already, we're already developing the conversation. And it also gives staff a really good opportunity to get questions answered earlier on in the process, and allows them to respond to concerns that maybe are coming up for maybe the first time. They have the opportunity to digest it and get information back to us. I think it sounds like a great idea. And then after we, if it works, then into 2019, continuing with other more standing meetings, I think is a good idea. Gets everybody more involved. That's my two cents.
I like it.
I'm not sure about, you know, I think this is a really painful budget. One of the, all the years I've been here, it was sort of, and I understand your frustration, Dana, trying to...
I'm not frustrated. That's no question.
Flush through this thing and, you know, meeting after meeting on this. So I'm not real su, I think the members that, I don't know if it should be slid off to committees so much as the members that have the questions should be sequestered and sat down to go through the items that they are having problems with. I don't know if it's fair. I think some of us understand the budgetary process. We've been through it for years. We respect what the staff is doing and understand it. So I'm not so sure. When I first got here, we had meetings Monday, Wednesday, and sometimes Thursday, and sometimes Tuesday. And I said, if you can't run a government like this as an administrator, just Monday and Wednesday meetings, then you're not running an efficient government. So, or maybe the people in it aren't as efficient as we really want them to be. So I don't know. It looks like, you know, maybe Mike feels this way, too, that those of us who've gone through all the minutia of all the details as tonight with the Bridge Street deal and everything, are almost tired of rehashing this stuff constantly. And those people that maybe don't understand it could spend more time working on it, so.
John, I think, I think one of the, one of the issues was the CIP discussion was not really about the CIP. We spent very little time on the actual projects. It's a policy discussion. And, you know, if you look at it from that perspective, the operating budget should be entirely different, unless there's significant policy issues that need to be addressed. The biggest part of our budget, obviously, is payroll and, you know, the people. And, I mean, that's a, that's a huge part. So short of, you don't have a lot of things you can do there. And I think we got off track on CIP. I think we could have done a better job having maybe a policy discussion prior in a workshop or what have you, so that we could focus on the projects and what was going on there. It's a new council. They have different ideas. That's fine. You know, I'm okay with that. The past councils really had set the policy in motion, and that's what was there. And new councils have every right to change it. But keep in mind, I'm not sure I want to go through a lot of extra meetings. And I'm not so sure that after the, after a committee sits down and goes through it, that we're not going to have to rehash the whole thing with the council as a whole unless everybody shows up to every meeting. That's just, that's just my two cents. I do believe the operating budget will be a lot easier than the CIP.
You know, that's my fear, too, that if you have a committee meeting, come to a consensus in the committee, that it's going to start all over again when you get seven people back up here. I mean, I think it's going to be a big problem.
I think that's part of what Greg is asking, is, is the committee structure viable in terms of, or is it just going to be a committee of the whole meeting every time? And I think, I mean, it's our responsibility to spend the time with the material that's given to us ahead of time, to go through it. If we have questions, to either reach out to each other, to reach out to staff, so that we have a full understanding of what our questions are and what we're struggling with. I think that if we, as colleagues, agree, hey, these three people are on this committee, they're going to be vetting this stuff, but here are my questions, and have confidence that whoever the chair is of that particular set of questions that you have, will truly bring those questions forward, vet them for you, and have some confidence and trust. And honestly, it's a little difficult to do it until we've actually taken a crack at it. You know, that's part of the issue, is to take a stab at it, see how it goes. If we hate it, we can change it. You know, but we definitely have to have a little bit of faith in each other, that we're doing our due diligence and working together, even though we're not necessarily all sitting in the same room all the time with every single piece of the budget. You know, so I have very similar concerns. I don't want them to eat every meeting to be a committee of the whole. That doesn't make sense. It's not efficient, and it's not effective. That being said, I'm certainly willing to try this structure if that's what helps to give everybody some comfort. I respect each and every one of you up here. And so I want to make sure that we all have an opportunity to figure this out together. So, I mean, that's my two cents. It's probably all it's worth, too.
Well, I guess I want to just reiterate. My real, my first goal was really to work with you to try to implement this next year. It really wasn't about the budget process. And I had shared this with the mayor, vice mayor, actually, a couple of months ago, that I wanted to start thinking about that. So the idea was really about more of an immersion with staff throughout the course of the year, about programs and things like that. So one thing I thought I heard in my evaluation loud and clear was being able to have more time to understand how things work. So that can either be on individual council members to come in and get with us and do, or we can do that by committee. But I thought this budget, operating budget process might be a try one and see how it goes. But I don't know. Maybe I don't want to put all my eggs in that basket if the ultimate goal is to have a longer...
One of the things that I like about this idea is the opportunity for us to spend a little bit of time with staff and understanding what your key performance indicators are, you know, the breadth of the things that departments have to manage throughout their work year. That's one of the pieces I really like about this potential structure. I don't know. I kind of feel like we take a whack at it and see, see how it goes. But I'm more than open to discussion.
Well, I mean, I can make a motion to try and see what happens.
Well, I think you could. We, I could publish a schedule, and I guess, oh, I will work with the committees to propose schedules. And here, I think the beauty of it is, is there are three of you on a committee, and it's maximum flexibility. You can do those anytime you want. You can do them morning, afternoon, evening, whenever. Doesn't have to be at night, sitting here for long duration. You can do two or three of them, or one. So I think there's a lot of flexibility with how you do that, so it may not be as painful as it sounds. But anyway, we could work with you to develop a schedule and propose it and see how that works.
I think a schedule would be helpful for us to understand the level of commitment.
Anything else for staff?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. P&amp;Z, Jane is not here. Admin, Chris?
Nothing to report.
Committee Development, John?